No.
No, it says, it says I'm on, I can see, yeah, that's what I need is Commissioner Phelps to help me work a microphone. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to, welcome to today's regular board meeting of Manatee County Board of County Commissioners. We are going to start as we always do with the invocation and the pledge. Today's invocation will be by Reverend Brock Patterson of the Longboat Island Chapel. And our pledge will be by our own Brian Parnell. He is a deputy county administrator and a veteran of our U.S. Navy. Please rise if you're able.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly God, we give you great thanks for this day, the beauty that you have created around us. It is truly a wonder. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings that allow us to be here, to be in this place. Thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to, to serve our neighborhoods, to serve our community and do the very best that we can in your service. And Lord, we just thank you so much for all those who make it possible for us to be here. The men and women of our fire departments, police departments, of our emergency services, and of course of our military. Lord, we thank you for their service, for their sacrifice, for what they do for us that allows us this opportunity to do the very best that we can, again, in your service. We pray this, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indefensible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get going, county administrator, are there any updates to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we have a few. The following changes were received after the publishing of the agenda updates online. Additional public comments for item 55, contract for sale and purchase for 9,000 town center parkway. Item 61, motion to rescind contract for roundabout on legacy and deer drive and generic comments. We also have revised staff report for item 51, resolution R-25-55 backslash SSP-25-02, Artisan Lakes Elementary School Site Plan. We also have county attorney comments and revised action requested for item 52, adoption of resolution R-25-072 indicating the Board of County Commissioners support for State of Florida Executive Order Number 25-44. Sir, that's all.
All right, thank you. And we do have a port meeting, but before we do, I just want to do a couple of quick housekeeping items so people understand what's going on. First off, I want to welcome back Commissioner McCann to the dais. I hope you're feeling, feeling well. And this is a, well, it was supposed to be a short agenda, which became a longer agenda. And we do have a couple of commissioners who have prior engagements that were planned back when we were supposed to start at nine o'clock in the morning. I want to make sure they get out to them, but I also want to make sure they have their voices heard on some of the bigger items we have. So just so everyone knows, after the port meeting, we will be doing consent and proclamations and then future agenda items. Once those are done, I am moving items 55, 56, 57, 58, and 61. It's the Lakewood Ranch office property, the Lena Road, the short-term vacation rental, and the two commissioner agenda items for e-bikes and the roundabout on university up to right after consent to make sure that everyone here, because I'm guessing that's why the people are in this room, have an opportunity to speak without having to sit around too long and making sure I have a full board for discussion. But with that, I am going to temporarily gavel out and pass this over to our port chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Manatee County Port Authority meeting for May 6, 2025. What I do is call that this meeting to order. First off, unfortunately, our director, Carlos Macarice, could not be here today. So we have someone even better standing in his place. Our CFO Denise Stoffelbeam will be giving our report today. Will we open up with this public comment? Is there anyone like to come forth and give a public comment regarding the port? Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes, sir.
For the record, Glenn Jabelina. So I appreciate you coming out to the Mixons a couple of Tuesdays ago. It was a great, great, great speak with you and the director. So one of the questions that I had there that was not answered, and hopefully we can have it answered today, is that the $500,000 loss on the land deal, how would that affect the bottom line at the port? Just want, if it doesn't, that's fine. If it does, that's fine. And two, what safeguards are going to be put in place so that does not happen again, other than we have a better board? So those are one of the two questions. And then third, on that non-refundable $500,000, how are we going to get restitution on that? How are we going to hold the people responsible and accountable for that tremendous loss out of the port? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wanting to give a public comment regarding the port? Sitting down, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'd like to open up and get a motion, basically all of our items today are consent agenda. So I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Thank you, Commissioner Sadiq. Having a motion by Commissioner Cruz, a second by Commissioner Sadiq. All those in favor of the port agenda for consent, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. Madam CFO, any comments on the port?
Not on the port. My only comment, of course, is from Carlos. He apologizes. It was very unexpected that he was not able to attend today's meeting, and that is all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any commissioner comments regarding the port? Thank you, commissioners. As of this moment, the port, the port authority stands adjourned, and I turn it back over to Chairman Cruz.
Thank you.
Welcome back. All right, we are moving into proclamations and awards. Before we do, I need a motion to approve the proclamations.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ron, second by Commissioner Sadiq. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That is approved unanimously. Commissioner Bearden, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Do you approve the proclamations? All right, that is approved seven to zero. Moving forward with the proclamations, we've got three that are being presented. The first one is the Economic Development Week Proclamation by Commissioner Sadiq.
All righty. Got the gang together. Whereas, the International Economic Development Council, IEDC, is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic development professionals. And whereas, the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Developer Designation. And whereas, the International Economic Development Council created Economic Development Week to recognize the work that economic development organizations and professionals do in their communities. And whereas, economic developers in Manatee County are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal programs, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, expand the tax base, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurs to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 12th through the 16th, 2025, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Economic Development Week in Manatee County, Florida. And the board commends the work of all economic developers in Manatee County, recognizing the importance of the profession and its contribution to the growth and prosperity of our community. Adopted with a quorum present and voting the sixth day of May, 2025, signed by our chairman, George Cruz. Here you are.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon, commissioners. Sharon Hillstrom, President and CEO of the Bradenton Area Economic Development Corporation. I just want to say that we so appreciate being able to do economic development in Manatee County. As we all know, we have an amazing county here, that other counties are envious of all the wonderful assets we have in our community to position us well for economic development. I want to thank teams within the county, the Development Services Team, Stephanie Garrison's team. Just have an outstanding working relationship with staff here at the county and so appreciate that. That has helped us be successful over the past 15 years of doing economic development here in Manatee County. Also want to thank you as a board. You have consistently supported every project that we've brought before you, and we appreciate your confidence and your appreciation of the work that we do. And I have two of my team members here as well that, we're a small but mighty team of five, and we are very passionate about the work that we do. Also, our partner Jackie Dzelski here, President and CEO of the Manatee Chamber of Commerce. I think we're probably one of the best working relationships in the county in terms of business organizations working together. And I guess what all this is saying is to be successful in economic development collaboration with government and with our private sector partners is extremely important for us to be successful. So thank you for this recognition. We really appreciate it.
And real, and real quick, and thank you for everything, both bringing the businesses in and keeping the businesses in. You said that this board has consistently backed you on the, on the projects you brought. There's a reason for that. It's because we have a, I believe, a very good working relationship, very productive working relationship. There's some counties around the state, some nearby, that don't always have the, the most friendly relationship with their EDC. But we do. We speak all the time. We've got meetings on our calendars. We engage. So you know what this board and what this government, what this community is looking for in economic development, and we trust you to go out and find that, and you do. So it, it's not a matter of you bring something and we approve it. It's just we work together, and it's a great relationship. It's why we don't have an REO department here to the extent we used to in the county, because this county government has put our trust in your EDC, and you've delivered. So thank you for everything you've done. And Jackie, thank you for the chamber. I'm a obviously a huge supporter of the chamber. When, when the businesses come in, they, they need to feel at home. They need to feel welcome. They need to feel part of a community, and you all excel at that more than anybody else. So thank you all for everything you do for our businesses. Thank you. Next, we're going to Commissioner Ron and the IMG Girls National Basketball Team.
IMG, come on. I'll let you guys. Come on down. Kind of filter around. Good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing us to have this today. This proclamation is a fun proclamation, and it recognizes a great basketball, girls' basketball team here in Manatee County. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas in the semifinals, IMG Ascenders upset the number-two ranked Westtown School in Pennsylvania with a buzzer-beating three-point pointer to win 64 to 61. The IMG Academy Girls National Team, the Ascenders, closed the season with a 17 and four overall record. Whereas, this marks the first national championship in the history of IMG Girls Basketball Program and the overall, and the second overall IMG Girls Team Sport following the U-19 Premier Soccer, Girls Soccer Title in, in 2022. The latest victory is a milestone, is the latest milestone in the growing legacy of excellence across the IMG Girls Athletics. And whereas, in 2025, the IMG Girls Sports Program success included the Girls Track and Field four-by-800-meter team broke the U.S. High School National Record at an eight-minute, 46 seconds and four, and .04 second mark. And a Tennessee, and a tennis athlete, Wakana Sanobi, won the Australian Open Junior Championship. And whereas, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to the players, coaching staff, and the entire IMG Academy community for this remarkable accomplishment. Your success serves as an inspiration to aspiring athletes across Manatee County and beyond. Now, therefore be claimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May 6, 2025, shall be known and designated and set aside as IMG Girls National Basketball Team Day in Manatee County, adopted with a quorum present and voting the sixth day of May, 2025, signed by our chairman, George Cruz. Congratulations, ladies. Coach?
On behalf of IMG Academy, we and our girls' basketball team, we would like to thank the commissioner and the county for this great honor. We're so proud of our young women, for the student athletes that they are and how they represent our academy and how they represent the county. So again, we're super proud of these young women and the coaching staff, and thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you.
Hold up, hold up, Mike, Mike. I got two. Sorry, Commissioner Ron. I've got a couple of commissioners on the board. Commissioner Sadiq.
Ladies, coach and coaching staff, it's just incredible to be able to provide this honor and proclamation to you all. You know, as you all know, it's women's sports and women's basketball in particular has gotten a lot of attention, which is awesome, especially in the last few years. Growing up is usually about men's basketball, and now women and the ladies can shine. So I do hope you all do well in your next step in life, and you can inspire the next generation of young women to succeed where you are now. So go out there, get some wins, and make us proud. Thank you.
Commissioner Ballard.
Ladies, congratulations. This is such an amazing achievement. I'm so happy to see all of you, and I know that you must be so proud of yourselves because you have worked so hard to get here. And I have two young daughters myself, and so I will be telling them about your team, and they'll, they'll be looking at you as a, as a measure of success for the future. So thank you for what you're doing. You're, you're an inspiration.
So who, who hit the three-pointer? I was, I was just waiting to ask when it came up. I didn't want to interrupt. Congratulations. All right, Mike, did you want to bring him up? Yeah, because there's too many of us, for us to come down. It'll be too wide. So we'll just stand up here, and they can go there.
Ladies, things I'll never do in my life, play basketball.
No, I can get wide enough. Let's just, yeah, balance it out. Commissioner Ron on the other side. Perfect. You go first?
Okay.
We're going to go him first?
Sold for me, two seconds. Six smiles. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, guys, and right here, three, two, one. Perfect.
Do we have anyone here from the Salvation Army? All right, I'll go ahead and get us started. Whereas, the Salvation Army in Manatee County has been serving the people of Manatee County for 102 years, physically, emotionally, and spiritually. And whereas, the Salvation Army is present wherever the need is greatest, especially during times of crisis, where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, hungry, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas, the Salvation Army invites the people of Manatee County to love beyond and help our organization continue to provide the life-changing aid by creating and supporting programs to meet the community's need. And whereas, it is fitting and proper on National Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in Manatee County. And whereas, National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others with their resources and time during the difficult period many of us are experiencing. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County that May 12th through the 18th of 2025 shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Salvation Army Week in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this sixth day of May, 2025, and signed by our chair, George Cruz. And we will get this proclamation to them very soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ballard. All right. Moving on, are there any items any commissioner wishes to pull from consent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to pull number 23, 45, and 49. Just quick questions about each one.
Twenty-three, what are they?
Twenty-three.
Uh huh.
Forty-five and forty-nine.
Five and forty-nine. Okay, any others?
I want to take 16, and we got 23. We got 45. That's good.
It's just 16, 16 is just adding the joint meetings we know that we worked on with the. 16, and what's the other one?
Um, Bob got 23. Bob got 45. We're good.
Okay. No, 16, 23, 45, and 49. Is that correct? I just want. I have 49. 16, 23, 45, 49. Are we good? All right. I will now entertain motions to approve consent minus those four items.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sadiq, second by Commissioner Ballard, to approve consent minus items 16, 23, 45, and 49. All in favor, please. It's up on the screen. Go ahead and vote. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Nay.
It's approved six to one with Commissioner Bearden in opposition. Okay. Has approved 6 to 1 with Commissioner Bearden in opposition. Okay. I know, I know, I forgot. I will open up citizen comment for consent items only minus items 16, 23, 45, and 49. I know it's been voted on, but I forgot.
I have items 9, 35, and 49. Ken Piper, I'm a resident. I'm sorry, Judge.
What did you say? You have what numbers?
9, 35, and 49.
49 was pulled.
Okay, well, does the public get to comment on it or not?
Yes, it's a separate item. It'll be opened up as a wholly separate agenda item with a wholly separate public comment.
Okay, so I only have 9 and 35, and I'm gonna be real short. Number 9 is $46 million in bonds for affordable housing. Affordable housing is the new buzzword now for developers. All they have to do is mention affordable housing and you guys bend over and approve it. This bonding does not affect the county's credit rating, I understand, but there is nothing that says that you must approve this bonding. If you do not approve it, then I'm assuming that the applicant's going to have to obtain funding elsewhere. We have our share of affordable housing now. Now, if you folks are really interested in making housing affordable, you'll get some decent-paying jobs in here and not the dead-end commercial jobs that you keep approving now. Item 35 is a guaranteed maximum price contract of $35 million. Now, the reason I bring this up is because that's a lot of money and you've hidden it in the consent agenda. So, if nobody had bothered to mention anything about it, you guys simply would have rubber-stamped it. When there's amounts like this involved, I think the public needs to be able to comment on them without having to go through the consent agenda process. This project is for 75th Street for water main improvements and the intersection improvements. This matter is probably necessitated by the overdevelopment that we have down in that area. The confusing part about this is that you're moving $56 million transferred among various funds in order to come up with $35 million. How do you do that? That's all I
Any other comments on consent minus the four items previously mentioned? I have a list of public speakers.
I'm gonna step aside.
But I know some of these people aren't even talking about consent. Go ahead, go ahead, and then I'll bring up these people.
So, Glenn Jabelina, for the record, item 10, execution of the law agreement between Trinity Without Borders and Valerie. She couldn't be here, so she asked me to just stop for a moment. And she was here a few weeks ago, very grateful. This is a property that you gave her a few years ago and ready to move forward on it. So, she apologizes for not being here, but she assures that she'll have a groundbreaking here shortly and you all will be invited. Thank you.
Okay, now I'll go through, but I believe these people were actually intending to put yourself on Future Agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. John, are you here for consent or for Future Agenda? John, that's the one.
That's a mistake. I didn't know how to use the computer.
Okay. Joyce Jordan, are you here for consent or Future Agenda?
Future Agenda.
Okay. J.O. Sullivan?
Here at your agenda.
Walter? Okay. Everyone on this list is for Future. I talked to most of them beforehand. They've had it in the wrong spot. Is there any other comment about consent minus those four items? I see no hands raised on the phone, so I will close public comment on consent. We've already voted on it. So, I will now open up the items removed from consent. So, item 16, whoever pulled that can explain why they pulled it. And question, you said it was mainly just questions, correct? Or clarifications? Oh, sorry. That's right. I put it on top because I was trying to put it chronologically. Go ahead.
Just in a short comment here. You know, we work on a meeting calendar about the beginning of the year, and we seem to have been having a little problem with being able to assemble a quorum, even though we sent that calendar at the beginning of the year. I just wanted to apologize that I myself will be communicating by Zoom at our, not our meetings this week, but the week after that, welcoming the Commissioners who have made an effort to attend every meeting. And let's just be mindful of the calendar that we set at the beginning of the year so that we schedule our public appearances, our speaking engagements, and things like that accordingly, because this should be job number one. And I realize that there are times that, hey, I'm taking a vacation next week, but I'll be calling it in. Dr. Bob has gone through great extents to make his attendance known, and I just would like for all of us on the board to be mindful that this is job one for at least the next four years. It's job one. And I think we need to make a little bit more of a concerted effort to, for all of us as a team, to work at showing up is half the job. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments about Commissioner Felts's vacation? I will open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment? I will close public comment. I will entertain motions on item number 16. I can see if there's a hand raised. No, there's no hand raised. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Sadiq, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. Cast your votes now. Commissioner Bearden, do you have access to the voting client? Otherwise, I'll just ask you verbally.
Don't.
Okay. How do you vote? All right. Commissioner Bearden's a yea. And has approved 7 to 0. Moving on to the next item pulled, which is item number 23. Item number 23, authorization issued change order, purchase order agreements. Who was that? That was you, right, Commissioner McCann? All right, go ahead.
The question I have on this is, you know, a lot of people didn't know about the change in the trash pickup, but what they're asking for is, you know, the 96-gallon is probably too big for many people that are hurt or, you know, elderly like me. So, the question is, will there be other sizes of the gallon purchased there?
Yes.
That's all they want to know and the people, you know, want to know.
Yes. And Chris here, but we did confirm that there is the option to request smaller sizes.
Correct. Yeah, Chris Collins, Deputy Director, Utilities. We're gonna do the roll-up, beginning, right now it's scheduled for October 6. There'll be a three-month period. It's just a massive effort to get 187,000 carts out. So, in order to do that efficiently, we didn't want to interchange smaller carts along with the big carts, so we're just making one big push with the big carts. After 30 days, residents will have the opportunity to request a smaller cart.
And will you be taking back the recycle bins and things like that?
No. Nothing's changing with recycling. Nothing's changing with yard waste, other than we're eliminating plastic bags. Everything's going down to one day a week, but the recycling process is still gonna remain the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Felts, did you have anything else to add on this?
You said, okay, and again, I got a very extensive email about this and, okay, where this particular item that we pulled from the consent agenda is merely for the purchase of additional large cans.
Correct.
So, did we underestimate the original number that we needed, or are we having people requesting extra cans?
You all just keep approving so many developments. We're growing so fast.
Yeah, there would be that.
Thanks. You're really helpful.
So...
No, we made a count. We just refreshed our numbers. You know, this process started several years ago.
Absolutely.
And we just, we continue to update. And, you know, as we got closer, we did one final count and realized we're...
So, the fact that people are requesting additional cans, we've accounted for that too?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, the reason I pulled this from the agenda is because a lot of work's being done with this. And again, at our ceremony this morning, I think I had four citizens in front of me, and three out of the four did not know we were going to once-a-week pickup. So, we need to get this out there.
The message is...
And of course, the time for us to register our public input and issues with it was when? Last year, when we were negotiating the contract. So, this is why that communication and that transparency might have saved us a lot of issues in the long run, that we need to beef that back up.
Correct.
But we have made some progress with this, and I think that's another reason why I pulled it from the agenda. I've been working hard with staff to address all the issues that are coming up. And you guys have been great to work with. We still are looking at some things. And please, I just think this is a good forum to get this information out.
Absolutely.
I got an excellent response on an email the other day that I asked that you get that message out to the community, so I don't have to answer it and I don't say anything wrong. But let me just briefly go through some of the things that we're working on. As I understood it, everybody's gonna get a 96-gallon can for 90 days, no matter what.
Correct.
Okay. Then, make sure you correct me, because this is just what I read. Then, if you want a second can, it's going to be, I think they quoted $13.62 a month for that extra can pickup. Would that be correct?
That number sounds correct. I have it in front of me, but that sounds...
Well, that might have been a good idea. So, then the next thing was that if you were disabled or you could get a note from your physician, you would be able to receive special services of getting your 96-gallon can from point A to point B. Would that be correct?
Right. That's exactly what we do now. So, none of those rules are changing. We currently do have that service.
And this is merely a note from your doctor?
Correct.
That says, "I cannot get a can from point A to point B."
It's an app, you request an application from the customer service department. You fill out the application.
Got it.
That runs, I think it goes up to Charlie and...
Now, does this mean that there's going to be somebody jumping off the truck, coming onto your property, and bringing your can however far it is from point A to point B?
It will be a separate truck, but the new service is automated. So, it's all automated service. Most likely, it's one driver per truck.
So, he gets out of the truck, goes onto your property, drags your can up, and then the automated truck picks it up and puts it into the truck?
Correct. I'm not sure exactly the specifics of how they do it, but these are franchise haulers. They're not county employees, but yes.
And I think that, so does that mean if I get a note from my doctor, that someone is gonna come up a quarter-acre driveway to my house and haul that 96-gallon can all the way out, the quarter-mile driveway out of my house? Because if not, if so, I mean, sounds great.
That is correct. That is the service.
Being a senior citizen, you know, it sounds great. But, okay. So, then the other thing is we are offering, after the 90-day period, the alternate-size can?
Yes. At no charge.
But you get 90 days that you gotta stick with the 96-gallon one. And the other thing that we're addressing out there is we have, I had a great conversation the other day with Albert, and what people didn't realize, we have a little bit, some special issues in my district in that we don't have door-to-door or driveway-to-driveway services in some areas. However, I found out the other day that the recycle truck can go down the road and pick up the recycles, but the people still have to take their garbage to, I guess you would call them nodes, at the end of the streets. Also, the other problem is that normally, I guess these people could get the smaller cans, but normally, they're putting their garbage cans in the back of pickup trucks, four-wheelers, golf carts, whatever, and having to take them up to the end of the road. If, we've got to come up with something for that, because there's no reason why if the recycle truck could get back to these roads. I think it's a matter of maybe some of the routes haven't been updated yet.
Commissioner Felts, I would highly...
I really would.
No, you seem to have a great working knowledge of the garbage pickup in rural Manatee County, and it's important. That's your district. And I'm sure our utilities department would love to have a briefing with you to discuss best practices, but this is a consent agenda solely associated with the acquisition of garbage bins.
Well, I'm trying to get the information out there.
There's lots of ways of getting information out there.
And I want to make sure that what I am being told and telling in the transparency to the citizens that we apparently seem to be lacking, what is going on? To continue, I understand that's being addressed. We're looking at the routes to see if we can get the automated cans back there, because if you're gonna line up 10 96-gallon cans that need three feet apart to be picked up, it's not gonna work.
That is correct.
So, I just wanted to thank you for working with me and giving me the opportunity to be transparent with the public that we are working on these issues and we're aware of them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I took myself off the board. It's your turn. There's no one else on the board. Is there any public comment on the purchase of these 96-gallon carts? Thank you, sir.
For the record, Glenn Jabelina, 96 gallons. I'll tell you, I bring two Detweiler bags out to the road and that's what they pick up, right? I recycle, I compost, I reuse. I mean, very little garbage. My question is, when I get this 96-gallon before I get the smaller one coming by, I'm not gonna drag it back to the house. I'm just gonna leave it out there. So, is there any ordinance that says I must take this huge 96-gallon thing back down the driveway in a certain amount of time, or can I just let it live on the side of the road? Because that's what I'm gonna do. So, can anybody answer that? Do I need to remove it from the side of the road? We'll find out. For the record, Glenn Jabelina.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, no hands are raised. I will close public comment. No one's on the board. I will entertain motions. We got a motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Sadiq. You can cast your votes now. Mike, you haven't even voted yet. Mike, you gotta vote. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote? Has approved 7 to 0. Moving on to the next pulled item. That is item number 45. Commissioner McCann, I think you pulled it first.
Yes, this item needs a little explanation. It looks to me like they're trying to get rid of conservation easement here so that they can build on it. And, you know, is that a wetland? Is that an area where it can actually come through the, you know, where the rain can go through? Is this an area that floods? The people from concessions do not want this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator. For the record, my name is Charles Metter, Deputy Director of Property Management. The agenda item you have before you is the execution of the Second Amendment to conservation easement between the concession and Manatee County. Just a little backstory on the history there. The developer granted to the county a conservation easement in September of 2006. And then in October of 20, excuse me, of October of 2018, there was an amendment to the conservation easement. So, what's in front of you today is a Second Amendment to the conservation easement, which releases and discharges tract 624, which is just under five acres, on the
Just to clarify, this is not affording anybody any development rights, per se?
I...
The answer's no.
Okay.
It's rhetorical.
If we release this conservation easement, what are they gonna do with it?
The way it was explained to me is the concession is requesting the release of tract 624 as identified on the plat from the easement to allow for critical improvements to the property for future professional golf tournaments that would be hosted on the property, potentially being the PGA Championship.
So, what you're saying is they're gonna build over it. And that's what the people from concession told me they don't want.
With all the respect, I can't say if they're gonna build on it or not.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kara Koenig with Development Services. So, the scope of this is just for the release. This is one of those areas where the county used to have a conservation easement over all wetlands and wetland buffer areas. Now, we can only require them over conservation easements for wetland mitigation areas. This was not a wetland mitigation area. It is a wetland, and they already have a state environmental resource permit approval to impact that area. to impact that area.
I do have one question. If they do have a state permit for this already, then why is this even coming before us? Aren't we preempted?
Because the easement's only with the county, it's not with the state, so they would have to release this easement to impact the wetland.
Are we required to release this easement?
That's a decision of the board.
Okay. People in the concessions don't want us to release it. Thank you.
Elliot, were you coming up to say anything, or just getting a better view?
Not the latter, sir. Elliot Felchoni, Tourism Director for the Bradenton area, Manatee County. The subject matter is a staging area for, like I mentioned before, the PGA events. It's highly needed. It'll be shell-based, so it would be pervious as well. And the owner of the concession plans to beautify it year-round, so he's checked every box. The economic impact for these PGA events, they're in the range of $30 million to $50 million economic impact per tournament, and it's the only, you know, viable golf club in the county to be able to host such thing to stimulate the economy. So we've had several discussions, and like I said, the brand is important to the owner of the concession, that beautification around the shell area is paramount to him and us. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McCann, did you have anything else? Otherwise, Commissioner Feltz is on the board. You good? Commissioner Feltz.
This is, this may seem like a small thing, but again, I think we have to talk about all the facts. I really didn't have a chance, this is in Commissioner McCann's district, but I have some concerns about it, but I've seen both sides of it, and I think that both sides of it need to be put out. Now, of course, with the weight that the commissioner for that district has voiced, based on his constituents, that aren't for it, I think that, I think that means something on top of the other issues I have with it. One of those issues is that there is a reason for those conservation easements to be granted when the concessions was built. The concessions was one of the first past the FDAB developments, past the Future Development Area Boundary. It has not been without concerns as far as its infrastructure goes. Secondly, we have already been in some situations where the concessions was denied before, and they came back and sued us. And so now, we're coming back and asking for more, and that's a little bit disconcerting. However, I think one of my biggest issue is that there is no, it's only three, it's like three acres. It's really not a large area of land. But it obviously served a purpose at one time, and just because our, I think with our stormwater issues and with the amount of lands that we keep losing every time, this is still of value, and to just hand it over to use for a parking lot, that's a little concerning. Plus, even if this does, and I've had these, this is a very, trying to see all sides sort of situation. Even if we do get $30 million, $50 million in, because we're able to hold a golf tournament, because we have this parking area now, where's, you know, only God can make a tree. So at least I'd like to see some compensation for, like we do with mitigation, that if you're going to take this three acres of conservation easements, where's the trade-off in the same bucket that we could have out there? You know? I mean, there's got to be some sort of value there. Obviously is a value to the land, so just turning it over and making a parking lot out of it, I would just like to see some effort made to give us an in-kind trade-off. Are we going to see anything out of that $30 to $50 million that's going to go into our conservation lands funds, or to purchase a conservation easement somewhere else? It's not just, it sounds simple, but there is a reason those three acres of land were conserved at the time, even if the political climate changed. There's some good things that could come out of using it for it, and I love the fact that it's going to be improved and utilized, but the bottom line is, I think I just want a little bit more of a guarantee that it's not going to end up being built on, as in more density in that area, that again, the commissioner for the district has heard from his constituents, they don't even want this to happen at all. But I'm sure they want to have a $20 to $30 million golf tournament that the concessions would be famous for. But is, and I've approached this, is there anything we could do to make that trade a little bit more fair? Sure, you could take these conservation easements, but can we have something in return, money back in that same bucket?
Chair and Commissioner Feltz, the applicant already did purchase mitigation from anti-mitigation bank to offset that impact. I believe it's 2.94 credits of forested freshwater wetlands from within the same watershed. And any of the trees that are removed from the area outside of that wetland, because there would be additional tree removal replacement, we would obtain tree replacement through the Land Development Code. So they are offsetting the impact through mitigation from our in-county manatee mitigation bank.
Microphone, microphone, microphone.
Yeah, the credits have already been purchased.
Credits.
Yep. Manatee mitigation bank, purchase credits. It's already been purchased, and it's available for the public to view on Swift Mud records. They've already purchased it through the state. Sorry, County Attorney.
Was that through the ERP permitting process?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. I'm on the board, just to point out a couple of things here. To use terms like, they just want us to turn it over, it's their land. They're not asking us for anything for free. They own it. The very fact that we use terminology like, "They want us just to turn over their land," shows a lack of understanding of what we're dealing with here. This is one of the best golf courses in the state of Florida, if not in the country. They have spent a lot of time and a lot of money building a brand and building a beautiful facility for the good of Manatee County, for the economic generation of Manatee County. And you've seen the rewards of that with the tournaments that come in, not because we did anything, but because they did something. They're not going to destroy this, they're not going to, they're not going to kill the goose that lays the golden egg over a couple of acres of shell. Like, that's asinine to assume that's what they're going to do. And look, I've gone to bat for concessions, hard. They tried to build, or now they are, building more houses there. I fought that every step of the way. It's way past 30 days, so I couldn't talk about it now. I fought it every step of the way, even when there's a mediation. I voted no on it, out of principle, fighting that. Why? Because it was houses, not some shell, pervious surface. And to say, "Well, these people sued us, now they want some," different people. The people who own the golf course are not the people who sued us over the land. The fact that it's in the same proximity and the word concessions on there is immaterial. It's not the same people. It's, the golf course is owned by a separate entity altogether. This is a simple request, I get it. I voted no when someone tried to move conservation easements down in UTC, but that was a much larger project with a lot more space, with a lot more damage that in theory could be done, and I voted no on that, and was very vocal about voting no on it. This is a simple request. There's a conservation easement here, not because it's a conservation easement land, but because back in the day, we just slapped conservation easements across everything, otherwise this land would not have it where it is today. They're not building a big facility here that's going to cause flooding issues and other issues. It's pervious surface shell. This is the least intensive thing you can do with this land. It's one step removed from conservation easement, but it's going to allow for tremendous benefit. It's going to allow for expanded utilization of a facility that has a vested interest in making sure their facility does not flood, making sure they have a vested interest that it's done properly. Otherwise, they are going to lose the opportunities. And yes, I'm sure there are people in concession, I know a lot of them, because I worked hard with them during the last go-around with the 17, or 22, or 21, or whatever it was, on any given day when they kept coming back, houses. I get they don't want it, but anybody in that neighborhood, of course they're not going to want it. No offense, don't take offense, I'm sure you will. You don't want buses showing up with people for a golf tournament? You don't want the noise? You don't want the, the community's benefiting to the tune of tens of millions of dollars, not to mention the long-term ramifications of people coming into Manatee County, seeing all the benefits, the beaches, the hotels, everything else, and wanting to come back with their families. The community's benefiting from it, the concession golf course is benefiting from it, the people who live down the street, I'm sure they don't want cars driving in front. They want a nice, quiet little area. They're going to be against it. They're going to be against it because they actually do not want these tournaments, regardless of what's, oh, of course they want a $30 million. No, they do not. They are not getting the benefit of the $30 million tournament. The community's getting a benefit of it. I'm sure the people who live immediately next to Premier don't want soccer tournaments there. I can promise you, the people who live right next to Lakewood Ranch soccer fields where my daughter plays, didn't want the lights in there, so the kids can practice at night, because four houses was going to have a little bit of light for a couple of minutes in their backyard. People are going to inherently look out for their own best interests, and that's just human nature. I'm not faulting you for it, but that's fact. So to say that the residents of concession don't want an independently-owned golf course to hold golf tournaments is not a surprise. I could have guessed that before you even said that. This is a reasonable request with a long-term, positive economic benefit to Manatee County. This would be silly to fight back over this. There's lots of wetlands that come in front of us, we just, I can't talk about that, that is in lawsuit. But there are, this board is doing, I believe this board is doing a very good job. We're bringing the wetland buffers back on Thursday. This board is doing a very good job of protecting the environment, buying more environmental land, protecting our wetlands and our wetland buffers. This is not one to continue that trend. This is a good opportunity for the benefit of Manatee County. This is not a hill we're dying on, on such a reasonable request.
I think that the point of this is, it's a sensitive subject at this time, when we have such a scramble, to maintain our green spaces, we're talking about stormwater. I think that if it was something, this is why we pulled it from the consent agenda to have this discussion, and I think that it is, just like we talked about, maybe there should be a dollar limit on what things appear on the consent agenda. Part of the reason for pulling it, and the same thing like with the trash cans, don't hide it in the consent agenda. If we're that's positive on it, that we've crossed all the Ts, we've dotted all the Is, then don't be afraid to make it a regular consent agenda item, instead of slipping it into the consent agenda, and, you know, not having that transparency to give people the confidence that we've thought this through. And I have, in spite of, I mean, I didn't even know that, how the residents felt about this, I too was there through the creation of the concessions, the issues that we had with it being past the FDAB, the maintenance of some conservation easements for their own good. And I just think that it was a subject that should not have been on the consent agenda, and could have had this discussion, which is very healthy and the right thing to do.
Is no one else on the board?
I have one more comment.
There's somebody on the board, Commissioner McCann.
How did they buy mitigation credits before we voted on this? I would like to know that, because is this just a rubber stamp, or what?
Commissioner and Chair, Commissioner McCann, so the Swift Mud process is almost lateral to ours, but sometimes they don't run concurrently. This is a viable wetland, so the mitigation would have been through the state, but it is contingent upon the release of this conservation easement.
Okay, thank you.
No else on the board? I will open this up to public comment.
By the way, I don't know what your 49 is, but my 49 is not this.
Well, that's unfortunate, we're on number 45.
Well...
My 49 is initiate steps, no circular steps.
Okay, George, you're very good at correcting people here, so I stand corrected. Okay, one thing I'd like to correct you about. Ken Piper, Manatee County resident, one thing I'd like to correct you about. An easement owned by the county is an interest in land, it's a valuable interest, compensation should have been paid for.
Are you doing okay this morning, Mr. Cruz? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I play a lot of golf, I've been playing for a long time. I've played the concession, and I've had talks with members about them wanting a PGA Championship five, 10 years ago. And so they've been trying to do this for a long time, and I see the value of having a big tournament here, but I don't think that the actual course could hold it. I don't think the PGA would actually approve the PGA Championship down here for many reasons, and it sounds like one of the reasons would be, I guess, they can't park there, but there's plenty of other options if it's just two acres full of cars. I mean, you got Premier down there, there's plenty of, actually, space down there that you could put those cars and shuttle people in. I've been to many PGA tournaments, and they do that. It's not a big deal. So to just sacrifice wetlands, which you guys have been fighting to get back, it seems like just, like against what you guys really want. And so like, it doesn't seem like that much, and the concession, you say like, "Oh, it's a benefit to the community." No, it's private. None of us can golf there. You actually have to be invited by a member, and it's got its competitive, like, challenges, so like, it could host like an event like that for PGA, and be competitive and be a hard course, but the actual people to go walk around the course while they're playing, it's almost impossible, because of the wetlands that are around each hole. Like, there's no room for these big crowds of people to be, they'd be trampling on all these wetlands. It's not a course that's built for something of that size. And I just thought I should say my two cents, because I think the people at the concessions and the private people that actually are members there know that, and they don't want that.
To be fair, we have had pretty major tournaments at the concessions. I've been at them, and there was a ton of people there, and so far, all the wetlands are still non.
Not a major championship.
Pretty big tournaments.
Well, you must not play golf.
I didn't say I played in the tournament, I said I watched the tournament. Any other public comment about my golf skills?
They're lousy.
Oh, man. You've got two minutes.
Sorry about that. Norman Bailey. My only comment, back to your comment, Dr. McCann, is where is that five acres? Do you have to drive through the residential area to get to it? And is that why the residents are objecting to the increased traffic during those tournaments that are projected? It's just a question. I don't know the answer. If it's on the outside of the, or the perimeter, then it's not an issue, is there? But if it's all the way through all the residential area, I can understand the objections.
For the record, Glenn Gibellina. Here's my thought. If they're going to get a PGA tournament, obviously they can send a rendering of this wetland and the alternative course, and say, "Okay, Mr. PGA Champions, would you approve this?" I mean, I think you can table this. They're not going to do anything until they get the approval of the major PGA, and according to the last speaker, they don't have the facilities to do it. So here's what I would suggest. Table this, get back to the concessions, and say, "Come back with a certified letter from the big boys, that this course is adequate to hold those tournaments, and then you come back to us and we'll approve it." But I think they're just trying to get a freebie, for the record.
Any other public comments? Saying none, no hands are raised. I will close public comment. I'm entertaining motions. I have Commissioner Feltz. Are you on the board again, or does not turn you out before? Okay. Go ahead.
As, sometimes I think the public states things so much better than we do up here. And my point that I'm making is exactly this, is that it may seem like a minor thing, it may seem like something to just slip in on the consent agenda, but this is really a bigger deal. this is really a bigger deal, and I think it's a bigger deal in both the positives and the negatives. I understand what you're saying about, you know, who's going to benefit from this, you know, it's not like it's open to the public, it's not like, you know, George the scratch golfer could go and compete in the tournament or anything, and, and, but there's an economic benefit to the community. We're talking about the money that's coming in to pay for hotels, restaurants, things like that. So just because it is somewhat of a private event or whatever, look at it on the other side, that does provide an economic benefit. But I think what we're seeing is, there's a lot of details. We're, we're going to make a vote on this, and I don't think we're, we're really prepared to do that. Now, I happen to know, and I'm sure Dr. McCann knows, exactly where these properties are. The questions that were asked, is this going to be people driving through our neighborhoods to get to the parking lot? What's to say that where's the provisions that today a parking lot, but tomorrow they're going to ask to build more apartments there? We don't have any of those guarantees. Sometimes it's not what we do, it's how we do it. So I think in this case, unless you are, my district is close to that, Dr. McCann is the representative of that district, we don't have any guarantees as far as answering to whether the PGA actually has endorsed this, is this, if we're hearing from citizens, can we just have some consideration for the transparency and the amount of due diligence that apparently both our constituents and other commissioners are asking for? And table this for a full presentation in the future, would we at least consider that to make it not a matter of doing it right? It's not about the subject matter, it's about doing it in a proper manner so that we don't just slip something in a consent agenda that really means something to some people? Can we consider that at least? Because I don't think any of us are sitting up here with all the facts. You're going to vote on something that if I sent you to a map, you can't even tell me what piece of property you're talking about, but I think Dr. Bob and I can. I think Elliot can. Maybe we should have brought that up, but we don't have all the information that we need, and I think we need to have a little bit more transparency in what we put out there, because there's nothing, if it's a good idea, then you got nothing to fear.
Mr. Chair. Oh, I already have a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
You're good. I, I got a motion by Commissioner Sadiq, it's seconded by Commissioner Ron, there's nobody else on the board, you can cast your votes now. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Nay.
It is approved four to three with Commissioners Phelps, McCann, and Bearden in opposition. Moving on to item number forty-nine.
Motion for reconsideration.
You are on the losing side of the vote. You have to be on the, the six, on the, the majority side of the vote to reconsider. Moving on to item number forty-nine. Initiate steps necessary, just to clarify, this is not a discussion on stormwater, this is just, this board authorized and directed staff to start working on stormwater fee, but they felt a formal motion was better to start their process, so this isn't really a stormwater fee discussion, this is literally just memorializing what was already stated to staff. So, I don't know, I forgot who pulled number forty-nine.
I did. So we want to talk about a stormwater fee. This is, this is a misnomer on here that was supposed to be changed, I got in my briefing so that they can actually explain it, you know, I'll have the county attorney change the words for us on this, you know, but it is kind of funny that we're giving away wetlands and asking for a stormwater fee at the same time. I'd like to ask the county attorney to go ahead and state what, what this should have been put on here, so that people understand.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. The, I think the subject and the title of the agenda item was a bit inaccurate based on what staff was actually seeking, because in some discussions with staff, the motion that they wanted is a motion to direct and authorize the county administrator to cause staff to perform the steps necessary, including but not limited to any required studies, and otherwise bring back to the board proposed options and recommendations by county administration for establishing a stormwater funding program, not necessarily a stormwater fee. So I think the title was misleading based on what staff really intended here, and so it was, you know, unfortunate that the public didn't have a, a better title to understand what was being presented today.
Okay, so Commissioner McCann, all right, do you want to make a motion to approve this based upon the revised language?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve on the language that we just heard from the county attorney.
I, second, I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Phelps. This is just a clarification, not really scrivenor error, it was a meaningful error, but thank you, Commissioner McCann, for catching that and making that modification. I have no one on the board, I'll open this up to public comment.
Mike Mead in Manatee County, a few years ago, there was a, an initiative, I think Sherri Corrie might have been the county administrator. I already got my name stated, thank you. And it, it was suddenly dropped, this idea of a stormwater fee. When you look at the unrestricted cash on Manatee County's balance sheet, it's almost a billion dollars. You don't need any kind of dedicated funding mechanism to, to fund a twenty-five million dollar program, which is what the latest budget on stormwater was. You can just fund it the way you're funding it now, and you have funded twenty-five million, and you still have a surplus, unrestricted cash on the balance sheet of a billion dollars, so I don't think there needs to be any discussion about new taxes or new fees for stormwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'll make a public comment.
Don't, don't feel obligated.
My, my name is, my name is John Zanatakas, I'm a Manatee County resident, and I'll tell you a little bit about stormwater. Seems like these, the, the biggest hitch that we have with stormwater is, is that we have private stormwater containment areas that are not being maintained, and when they fail, then all the residents suffer, and there's, should be codes to be able to go into these private areas and find a way to inspect them. If they're not inspected, and they're going to fail, which they will fail in time, and that's the reason that I'm here, is then you need to have fees. If you have fees, then go out and use those fees to inspect these privately maintained stormwater systems and fix them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Ken Piper, Manatee County resident, none of you were on the board when this last came up. It was a hot issue, and there's a reason those people aren't on the board anymore. This, this is something that needs to be nipped in the bud now. You guys need to go through a whole lot more than what you've gone through so far. This gentleman over here said something about a billion dollars. The last time I looked in the utility fund, there was six hundred million dollars in cash and cash equivalents. Now, you guys need to explain what that is before you come back to us and ask for more taxes. You've got a motion to consider a resolution for the DOGE, that's a great idea. I think you need to go through some cost-cutting measures first before you start talking about even more taxes. Thank you.
Andrea Griffin, Manatee County Advocate, and I'm not going to, all I'm going to simply say is, this county's taxed out of its, its brains. I hope that talks are not going to be of anything that taxes any resident of this county. We're tired of the taxes, we're all conservative here, lower taxes, less government, not more taxes, more government. We want this stuff stripped back. I'm sick and tired of paying this nonsense. People can't afford to live in this county. Things have got to be done without charging us. Scale back, live within our means. We don't need to have parks on every stinking corner that we're, we're responsible for. We need to be looking at these things. I'm tired of paying taxes in this county. Furthermore, I travel all over this country, just came back, you guys haven't seen me for a while. Why is this state so high in our gas prices? I go over the border, I'm paying two dollars and thirty-four cents, two dollars and thirty-four cents. We have the ports. Why are we still paying three dollars? I'm just asking some questions here.
For the record, Glenn Gibellina, getting some, getting some good airtime today. Anyways, you know, I have a philosophy, don't make your problem my problem, right? Taxation without representation. I'll give you an example, and I'm proud of my property, I've been there forty-five years. In the last three hurricanes, not one drop of hurricane rain left my property, because I designed it with food forests, rainwater catchment systems, hooter culture beds, and everything else. Every drop that comes on my property stays on my property. So there's no way I should have, see a stormwater fee on my taxes because I manage my stormwater efficiently. Amen.
No, I got one caller with their hand raised, caller four-four-five, is your, is your hand raised for this item? I'm sorry, four-four-one.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Anthony Shulow, Manatee County resident, appreciate the opportunity to call in for this meeting, and I personally hope the county does consider taxes after they start collecting impact fees in a timely manner and upfront. You wouldn't have a delta or the perception of a delta with stormwater management if we were collecting the infrastructure fees on all of the applicant projects that are up in front. I hope you continue to champion that, that cause, because if we were getting that, that money upfront, our infrastructure would probably be less deteriorated than it is, and, and only after that. I also believe that proportionate application of those fees is, is accurate, as Mr. Gibellina had mentioned. I think you have an opportunity to, to have the staff come up with a, a good algorithm to figure out whether it's your acreage or your, your amenities that you may have on your own property versus your urbiased surfaces, so I can understand where everybody's sort of upset about the increase of taxes, but I think they should be more upset that we have allowed the development to increase so much here without getting our fair share of the money that they should be paying to make all of these changes to the geography. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Anthony. There's nobody else on the phone, nobody here, so I'll close public comment. I will just point out, Anthony and anyone watching, we are working on increasing impact fees to their fullest extent, finally. There's a work session tomorrow morning, nine AM here, and then it's also going to be on the land use meeting on Thursday, so that is a process. However, impact fees will not be used to fix stormwater, that's not one of the acceptable uses of them, so that wouldn't have done anything. Oh, Commissioner Bearden, your hand's raised. Are you speaking on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question in regards to, and this is for staff, just so the public knows, what is our plan to essentially establish the dedicated stormwater fee? Is it for specific areas within the district? Because, for example, Lakewood Ranch, you know, parts of Lakewood Ranch have perfect stormwater, right? Are they going to be paying that tax? Are we looking at specific districts within the, within the county?
Commissioner, just, just to clarify, they don't have a plan yet, this is a vote to authorize them to begin working on creation of a plan, which would be inclusive of, do we do it by regions like Lakewood Ranch versus elsewhere? There, there's no conceptual plan of, of how we're going to fund this at this point, we're just authorizing them to start preparing that to bring back to this board to make a decision.
Got it. Just wanted to, just want to make clarification on that, so moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Phelps.
I just want to keep correcting the verbiage that we corrected with the motion, of course, it's not on there. Can we please repeat the corrected motion? Because I don't believe, I think what we're saying, again, I'm seeing on my screen, initiate steps to, necessary to establish a dedicated stormwater fee. What is it we are really trying to do is to find a way to fund our stormwater issues? And I would really appreciate that we use that verbiage, because that is the verbiage of the motion. Can we repeat it again?
Commissioner Phelps, the title is not relevant, it's the motion that's on it, that's below it.
Oh, it's relevant.
That, that says county administrator for establishing a stormwater funding program, which is.
That's what I think we need to use, that language. Can we please repeat the motion so that we are using the proper verbiage that was suggested and approved?
Would you like me to do that, ma'am? The agenda item that was published, I believe, has the correct verbiage on it, and the motion is, motion to direct and authorize the county administrator to cause staff to perform the steps necessary, including but not limited to any required studies, and otherwise to bring back to the board proposed options and recommendations by county administration for establishing a stormwater funding program.
There's no one else on the board, a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Phelps, everyone has casted a vote except for Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote, Commissioner Bearden? And that is approved, seven to zero. All right, we're done with consent. At some point, we're going to have to take a recess, but before we do, there was one proclamation we wanted to, to present, it came in towards the tail end, but we've got some important people here that, that want to hear this proclamation, so Commissioner Sadiq, were you going to read that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are the family members of Parthenia Jackson Davis in the room? Excellent, thank you.
Yep, I'll do that.
It was, it was approved, not consent.
First of all, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank you very much for a little bit of the flexibility and leeway. We had quite a few proclamations today, don't get to read all of them, but we had some family members come by and wanted to at least recognize it, but thank you again for letting me read it, I, I really appreciate it, and I know the family does. Very briefly, I want to thank the Clerk's Office, the Carnegie Library, and of course, my aide Maria for taking, spending a lot of time on the research on this, had to dig up a lot of paper records to figure, to find the appropriate amount of information and get this, get us to this point, a little bit later than I would have liked, but I appreciate the family's help here as well. All right. Whereas, Parthenia Jackson Davis was appointed as the postmaster for the Cortez Post Office on November twenty-second, nineteen eighty-six, and whereas, Ms. Davis was employed by the U.S. Postal Service for twenty-one years, and whereas, Ms. Davis earned a Bachelor of Science in Religious Studies and took two short-term trips to Kenya and Jamaica, she was a musician and director and founder of the Voices of Praise Singers of Manatee County. And whereas, Ms. Davis is proclaimed as Manatee County's first black woman postmaster and hereby honored for her great work in paving the road for young black men and women of Manatee County. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that May sixth, twenty twenty-five, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Manatee County's first black woman postmaster day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this sixth day of May, twenty twenty-five, signed by Chairman George Cruz. If you'd like to speak.
I'd like to be the county commissioner, but it's proclamation for my sister. I've been trying for years to get this done. It's been hard, but it finally happened, and I can rest now. And I can rest now. She's gotten the recognition that she deserved. And the people of Cortez, I'm sure they will be happy that she had received the recognition. And our black community, for our young kids. I hope they can see there's nothing that they can't do if they put their mind to it. Follow their dreams, as my sister did. Nothing will stop you. And I just want to say thank you again, and God bless you all.
Thank you all very much for coming. I'm glad we could do that for your sister. All right, we, we're now going in, we're going to go into future agenda item comments, but we're only five minutes away from our usual recess. So what I'm going to do is it is 2:24. We're going to take a ten minute recess till 2:35. We come back, we're going to immediately go into future agenda item comments and then into the items that we pushed up as discussed earlier, including the Lakewood Ranch office and the roundabout. So ten minute recess till 2:35. All right. Some of us are back. We are going to continue on with our agenda, and we are on future agenda items. This is 30 minutes now, and then we'll reopen at the end of the meeting. For anyone who wants to talk about anything that is not on today's agenda, I have four people who have pre-signed up. First one is Joyce. Are you here? You are here. Oh, there are.
Joyce Jordan, Manatee County. I'm back. Dean and I have stayed away for a while because we thought things were going well with the shelter. So I decided to take a drive. And nothing has been done at Bishop. There is no sign of any construction, of any kennels, of any evidence of anything, yet. Now, we were promised this was going to be done by the end of the year. I'm still waiting. Those dogs are going to have to suffer through another hot summer because nothing is being done, and we would like a status. We were supposed to be getting them quarterly statuses, of course, we have not. That was January, this is May, and we have not heard a word. So we would appreciate it if you could get us some information and get it out to us because this does not look good. If you don't have the kennels there, nothing can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Cochran.
Hi, Vicki Cochran, Manatee County. Good afternoon. Thanks for listening to me today. I discovered late last week that a development is going in across the street from my community. I reached out to Commissioner Siddique with an email and actually spoke with his aide, Maria Zuleta, and she suggested that I come to the commissioner's office. Now, in the little bit of time here, one of the folks that are with me, I'd like to, two of the residents of our community are with me, Peggy Moffett and Dana Scott. And Dana spoke with Mike Ron and was told that we should probably be at the land use commission meeting. So I don't want to waste your time, but I do want to put on the agenda very briefly what our concern is. Southeast, southeastern Freight Lines owns the piece of property across the street from Tree Lakes Resort, which is on 73rd Street East in Palmetto. It is just down the street from Rebonia. So I think you know where that is. The intersection there, so it would be the northwest corner of 41 and 73rd Street East. They have filed a site plan for a trucking distribution center. And so we have some concerns. We are a cooperative community of 392 owners. About 80 people are year-rounders. So, so it's not just a snowbird park. Our concerns are environmental. There are eagles on this property. And the traffic and the congestion and the infrastructure with respect to roads that will be necessary to put this project in place are disturbing for us, as well as what it might do to our property values. So I called to find out where this was in process, and I still don't know. So I'm guessing I should come to the land use meeting. I did try to search for it. And I will share with you also that I did contact the Audubon Society, the Eagle Watch folks, and I actually reached out to the southeastern Freight Lines corporate office and received a call today from a very nice gentleman with the real estate department who is going to keep us informed. But I'd like to know where we are, or you are, with respect to county approval for a particular facility, and whether it's zoned commercial or not. Thank you.
You can't, I'm in the middle of public comment, so you're not going to stand, go up and talk, but you can certainly grab, hold, you can go talk to Nicole. She runs development services. She would be able to give you better information.
Okay, thank you so much.
I've got Pat Simmons, but I do not see Pat in the room. She's not here. Mike Meehan.
Mike Meehan, Manatee County. Every couple of years, I do an analysis of Manatee County's surpluses and Manatee County's reserves and make a comparison of those numbers against other counties within the state of Florida. Luckily, Pinellas County and Sarasota County have also just reported their numbers for 2024. So what you see in front of you is, if we can get that screen up, are the comparative numbers on reserves and surpluses for Manatee County. Okay. The surplus for Manatee County in 2024 was $459 million. The property taxes are $399 million. So a ratio of our surplus to property taxes is 115%. You can look at the Pinellas County surplus, it was $361 million. Their property taxes were $76, 765 million. So their ratio of surplus to property taxes was less than 1, roughly 47%. And Sarasota had a ratio of surplus to property taxes of 92.4%. So you can see that Pinellas has done a great job of keeping their property taxes, or keeping their surplus below what the property taxes that they're charging its citizens. When you look at, when you look at the reserve position for Manatee County, we have almost a billion dollars, as I mentioned earlier, of unrestricted cash. Florida statute says that you can only hold reserves equal to 30% of your current, your expenses. That's 297 million. So we're over-reserved above Florida statute by 668 million. Percentage-wise, that's 125%. We are non-compliant with Florida statute and have been for quite some time. Pinellas County has unrestricted cash of 234 million. 30% of their expenses was 465. So they are in compliance with Florida statute. Sarasota County had unrestricted cash of 268 million. 30% of their expenses was 293. So they are also in compliance with Florida statute. We are not in compliance with Florida statute and have not been in compliance for a long time. Some key points. When the surpluses approach or exceed When the surpluses approach or exceed property taxes, it begs the question, are property taxes even necessary? This is a point raised by Governor DeSantis this year with the Florida Legislature. It also raises the issue of fairness. Is Manatee County charging too much for its services? This issue is particularly important for the 40% of Manatee County's citizens who are living paycheck to paycheck. I need about 20 seconds. On the reserves, excess reserves represent money removed from Manatee County's economy. Excess reserves are just sitting in a money market fund and provide no benefit to the local economy or our citizens. To address this issue, you should consider a substantial millage cut, unlike the very small millage cuts made in the prior years.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. 10 seconds. 10 seconds.
Okay. Hurry it up.
You should also consider a variable property tax credit of at least $500 per homestead household. This will cost about 50 million, which can be then -- which can be easily funded from reserves, and it will begin to show you have some sincerity about complying with the maximum reserve levels allowed by Florida statute. Thank you.
All right. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I got people. All right. Well, because there's people that accidentally put themselves on consent list instead, so I'm going back to that. So John.
Can I explain that word?
John. John, you're --
I signed up three times for future.
You literally just spoke.
I know, but this is why. I signed up. I signed up for future, but it put me under --
You were under future. I called you.
Yeah, because you told me you were showing up under future.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
My name is John Zanatakas. I'm a Manatee County resident, and I'm here, I guess, for the third time. It's going on three years, and I guess KVO was the person, and I guess he said, there's a civil war going on in our community, and it's unnecessary, and it's unfortunate. But anyway, I'm here about my adjacent -- the adjacent subdivision to a development that had a privately-owned regional stormwater system fail. Okay, so the regional stormwater system means that there's multiple subdivisions that are dumping water into a retention pond, and then at the very distribution or outflow is privately owned. Doesn't make sense to me, but that's what was the case. It had a history, and it did not make it through Hurricane Ian. The collapse with a simultaneous water main break pushed debris outside into the public navigable canals of Coral Shores Development. So these are publicly navigable canals and are, who knows who owns it because Manatee County seems to think or hasn't come out to say who it is. Only wall repairs of the stormwater system are almost complete. Further debris no longer threatens to cause more property damage. They are trucking in hundreds of dirt to fill in the dirt that went into the canals. So County Commissioner KVO stood at a regular meeting and said that he -- I'm not sure if I misunderstood, but responsibility of the cleanup for the debris that's within our canals and money has been set aside to clean these out? I guess, is that true? I guess I asked that question to our commissioner. Can you confirm if the cleanup of the stormwater system debris will be in the scope that meets our expectations, the Community Shores community and the general public, which make this channel the fifth most trafficked channel in Manatee County? And that's the study that I have available, or WCIND has that available. A letter has been sent to the office here. I think, I believe Charlie Bishop received it at some point in December, and again, a positive action or some action by the county would help us to restore safe navigation, flushing of our canals, and improve water quality to Sarasota Bay. And when I say water quality and how does that happen? When you have a sill at a canal, and it's the whole reason that we no longer do finger fill canals anymore, is because water quality, you have a stagnant water, and the water can't flush. In March 28th of 2023, there was a no-action vote by the commissioners, and basically there was no consideration of the adjacent property. That's why I'm here. I'm not here for Coral Shores East or what was called Mangrove Point that turned into Coral Shores. I'm for the property that's adjacent to it, which are the canals. No consideration of ownership for the adjacent property, no consideration of Manatee County's authority to act without the owner's permission to permit the alteration of our canals that were done for this developer. So I ask, please, can we just get a meeting and I can explain all this and have some positive results and stop the civil war for 700 people, residents? Thank you.
Talk to your district commissioner and catch him up and see where we go. Now, I've got Jay and Walter. I don't care which one you come up first. You're the next two on the list, and that will extinguish most. I'll just let people up on this board know because I know what the intent of this conversation is. This is something in the middle of litigation, so please, we don't typically respond to public comment anyway, but do not respond to these comments. No offense to you, that's just how -- that's legal. Go ahead.
Sure. Again, my name is Jay O'Sullivan. I am the president of Save Gates Creek and its Neighborhoods Incorporated. We are a 501(c)(3). Fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, I have also been the pro bono attorney for that group, and although Mr. Cruz said we're in litigation, actually, I thought we were on the consent agenda, and let me explain why. Presently, before the Second District Court of Appeals is our Ritter Cesarelli, which the county must reply to on May 15. That sparked our request to settle from the county, and I have it here. That was on April 21. And we responded, and we accepted it, and so we said, okay, the date it must be heard is today to avoid all the work that everybody's going to have to do. As all of you may or may not know, we faced seven different lawyers, three from Gray Robinson and four from the county. I have no idea why those funds are being spent, but at this juncture, we have -- let's see if this thing can show up. Do I hit something to make this work?
They do it.
Okay, good. So I have a copy for each of you because I do not understand why it's not on the consent agenda. All I can say to you at this juncture is it would be incredibly helpful if we get a resolution of this without further waste of time, effort, and money, particularly from the county standpoint. It's just mind-boggling. Now, I know the county attorney knows about this without a doubt because I've been in communication with her, and her reply was that I should be discussing this with a very lawyer that in her outfit, Chris DiCarlo, who proposed it. I expected Mr. DiCarlo to be here today. He's not. Bottom line is, we've reached a settlement. I do not understand why it's not on today's consent agenda, and I'm perfectly happy to provide you with the actual language, which is just emails, but it's very clear, and that's an example, and here we are. So obviously, what's going on relatively speaking is the county has, for reasons that are -- let it say, the county has believed, even though we are a volunteer organization, that we should be paying their attorney's fees after we dismiss without prejudice. That's been a fight for three years. That's one year beyond what the court rules allow. So yes, am I frustrated? You betcha. Did that require a trip to the Court of Appeals? It did, and a settlement agreement is in front of you. If anyone wants a copy, I've brought plenty.
All right. Thank you. Well, the clerk certainly needs one because you put it up on the screen.
Sure.
Walter, you're up.
Hi. My name is Walter Rosak. I'm the vice president at Save Gates Creek. As Jay just said, on April 17th, we received a settlement offer from Christopher DiCarlo, which we all agreed to. It's a question of getting it before you. He even stipulated that it would require county commissioner's approval. It's very similar to what was presented in November of 2023, a year and a half ago, except in that case, for some reason, they named the four directors individually, in effect, outside of our nonprofit, which that seemed highly irregular and improper. But we were trying to settle it, and then all of a sudden, Gray Robinson just dropped it and said they're not going to discuss it any further. So here we are, a year and a half later. The county has spent thousands of dollars attacking us. Why did -- this case started in 2020. If you were the commissioners at that time, you would have ruled against this 18-acre property at State Route 64 and 117th. Had the wet 18 acres been concreted over with a parking lot for an auto dealership, the Osprey Landing community would have been underwater last August due to Hurricane Debbie. I have photos of all the flooding that happened during last August. Our community and the neighborhood is very happy that we rallied and we fought this battle, but we ran out of funds, and we ran out of funds, and we had to drop it. And Jay O'Sullivan has been doing this pro bono for the past two years, and we've got up to seven attorneys hammering away at us for funds we don't have. We're down to $2,000. We can barely pay for court reporter fees. So let's get this settlement done and get it over with and put it behind us. We love Manatee County. We are very unhappy that Manatee County is fighting for something that everyone should have been in favor of to begin with, to preserve the wetland in Gates Creek that runs through this property that should have never been approved. But again, it's behind us. We'd just like to put an end to it, and we'd appreciate it if you would support this settlement and disclose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. All right. You want to talk?
Just wait.
I figured I'd give you a chance before I opened it up to everybody since you were so antsy.
Andrea Griffin, Manatee County Advocate. So as you guys can imagine, I'm not going to be talking about things that have been pulled and put on to this agenda, predominantly 55, but just the situation surrounding it. I heard that a $30 million contract was literally put on our consent agenda. That means that --
This is future agenda items, not item 55 and not consent?
Yep, that's exactly it. So we're going to be talking about the consent agenda, the processes for consent agenda as a future agenda. So for my future agenda, I would like to talk about how we can stop a $30 million contract from showing up on a consent. So my future agenda would be a dollar limit on consent items that can be listed on the consent agenda, and I think this will prevent something like this from happening in the future because it took a hand. That means four commissioners up here to make a $30 million decision for Manatee County without them even knowing about it. Moreover, now that I know that we have 96-gallon cans coming to our front door, I would like now a new consent item, a moratorium on, you know, regulations of our cans being at the end of the road. I'll take the smaller can when they're available. I, much like Glenn Gibbelina, recycle more than I throw away this day and age, so the smaller the can, the better for me. And the last thing is, is when people call, I want a motion so George can look at the camera instead of up at the clouds. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Just to clarify your point real quick before I let Glenn come up, the easiest way to set limits on the consent is to read the consent because there was no $30 million item on consent. It was a $35 million contract. What was on consent was an addendum to it, which was $3 million. So the actual vote was for $3 million, not for 30 million. That $30 million contract was on there previously, and it was an actual agenda item when that item was discussed. This was an addendum adjustment to an existing contract. Glenn.
For the record, Glenn Gattfied Gibbelina. Lawfare, boy, I tell you, I sympathize with these guys. You did that to Joe McClash. You sigged seven attorneys on him outside counsel, and now you sigged seven on this local thing that are trying to do the right thing. You gotta, you gotta put -- go one-on-one. You want to see how good a lawyer you are? Don't send seven after him. Go one-on-one. Think you guys would get chewed up and spit out, but this lawfare against the public has got to stop. Let's move on to animal shelter. Tell, I think you mentioned to the administrator that we would like to see quarterly reports. I think you did that motion, if I go back through there. Live up to it. What's so hard? A quarter is every three months. If you got nothing to report and apparently nothing got done out there, then just say it. We got nothing, right? Tell us something. If you say you're going to do a quarterly report, do a quarterly report. The other thing is, we talked about surplus lots, non-conforming and conforming. I've yet to see a list on that as well. So I don't want that. I'm just bringing it up because I don't want it to be kicked down the road like it has been time and time. If we have surplus lots, let us know about it. We have non-conforming, let us know about it. That's a priority, all right? Affordable Housing Board, who's the vice chair? Anybody know? Anybody? I don't know.
Affordable Housing Board, no.
Ahab.
Yeah.
He's not on that board.
Yeah, she's Lord.
Who?
You know her.
No, it's got to be the commissioner. Talking about Ahab, the Affordable Housing Advisory Board.
You're talking about the housing.
No, Ahab. So we have Tell. Tell, do you know who the vice chair is? I mean, second-in-command when you're out of town? I mean, it's got to be another commissioner. You guys double up on that all the time. Okay. The Attorney's Office. I went up there the other day to do a records request on public, on the Sunshine Manual. Unbeknownst to me, you can do it electronically, but when Nikki Palmer was there, I showed her the manual, invited me in the office, showed her to bring out his manual, and we got a laugh out of it, and I went down the way. These guys, first of all, they make me stand there 15 minutes. No chairs on the ninth floor in that direction. Anyways, don't aggravate me. I want to leave on a good note. If we can zoom in on this, Commissioner Ballard had an opportunity to talk to Nixon a couple of weeks ago. I was so impressed with this art rendering that this is going to be a home run. This is the legacy this board needs to move forward on. I couldn't have laid this out better, and I do permaculture. I'm very familiar with that. We need to move that forward. Thank you, Amanda.
Any other public comment on future agenda? We've only got like four minutes left, so.
Ken Piper, Manatee County resident. I'd like to suggest that the board hold a future work session to make citizen participation in the quasi-judicial hearings more effective.
I can hear a complaint from him.
Do I get to talk or? Okay. Section, Florida statute, section 120.52, subsection 13D permits the appointment of an advocate for, to residents to represent the overriding interest of the public in these hearings. There's some rough language in there, and there were several of us that actually went to our state representative and asked him to try to smooth this over, but I think regardless of the statute, I think you would have the authority to have someone on staff that could help out with the individuals to make sure that the public's interest is more clear. There's another thing. When you folks make decisions, the staff presents you with a one- or two-sentence resolution, and there are no findings of fact whatsoever. So we have no idea of what you're basing your decision on. There was a statement made in the Wetlands buffers case that one of the commissioners said he had heard absolutely not one word that would justify reducing or increasing the buffers, and there was probably 12 hours of testimony, but he didn't hear one word. So we need to find a method to make sure that the public's points are made, and if necessary, maybe an opportunity for that individual to cross-examine the developers, expert witnesses, as well as the rest of the staff. Cross-examination used to be Cross-examination used to be concluded or included in your rules of procedure. Well, not cross-examine. We had the opportunity to ask questions through the chair, so it wasn't direct cross-examination. That's been eliminated now. So I'd like to have something like that put back in. And finally, when you make your decisions, why don't you tell us what exhibits you're accepting and which ones you're rejecting? And if there's testimony that you don't believe, why don't you include that in your findings of fact? Thank you.
Thank you. We are just about out of 30 minutes. However, three people had their hands up, so I am going to, without objection, I'm going to allow those three to speak, and then we're going to close public comment. We will reopen them after. So Rodney and Felton and Chris, the three of you will all get your three minutes, and then I'll close public comment. We will reopen it at the end of the meeting, but I can't leave unended public comment at the beginning. We have too long of an agenda.
Hey, how do I, just put it here?
Yeah, just put it here, and we'll open it up, turn it on.
All right. I'm Rodney Jones, a United States citizen. I want to talk about this document here. This is a very concerning document that involves Manatee County government. I've already made the initial complaint to Lori Stevens at the IG office. This document came from the July 16, 2012 county, City of Palmetto Commission meeting. Everything on this document that came from the public property appraisers office is fraudulent. Where it says the Palmetto Youth Center is owned by Manatee County government, that is not true, and it never was according to Ken Burden and now according to Angel Coloniso. Where it says owned by the City of Palmetto, it's fraudulent. It is not owned by the City of Palmetto. All of this land on here where you say unclaimed, everything is the estate and the trust of Luther Ware. Luther Ware was murdered in April, April 25, 2016. Since that time, we have been unable to get law enforcement here in Manatee County to do the murder investigation because some of the most prominent public officials and public employees are named in first-degree felony land theft. The City of Palmetto within this block, this is just a part of the estate of Luther Ware, but I did a public records request to the school district of Manatee County to ask Lincoln Memorial who owns that property. They're running from it. They said there's no records to show who owns the property. So how do we have an entire school on a property and nobody owns it? The same with the Palmetto Youth Center where it says Manatee County government. This was done by fraudulent deeds. So Amanda Ballard, Petticini got you in the middle of this. Y'all schemed and connived to get that District 2 seat away from the community. We're going after you because you have full knowledge of this. And under Florida statute 838.022, which is official misconduct, it doesn't say that you have to have a finding or an investigation. If you have information of other public officials that are involved in public corruption and felony acts, you have a duty and responsibility to take that.
Rodney, I'm going to let you keep talking here. I'll even pause your thing. You can sit here and talk about this to your heart's content for three minutes, but do not go after directly other commissioners up on this board, make threats. You can do that on your own time.
Sir, I'm not making a threat. I'm making a promise. And this is called First Amendment, and I'm entitled to say what I want, so please don't interrupt me when I'm talking unless I'm doing something really offensive or I'm causing disruption, and that is the law. That is the Constitution. So we are going after you because you have had full knowledge of this. You and Reggie Bellamy. Reggie Bellamy, he had filed a complaint to the Federal Trade Commission stating that Krista Ware, who is now the trustee of that property, according to Angel Coloniso, March 31st of this year, she sent her language that says that she is your trustee. But you know when that document was actually made? It was made January 25th of 2018. They violated that young lady's rights while they stole their property, millions of dollars in property, Bill Gabano sitting on the bill. And I'm talking big because I can back up every bit of it. I'm not worried about anybody coming after me with seven attorneys. If they would have, they would have already been. This has already been filed with the governor's office, to the chief inspector general. I'm going to Lori Stevens since she's local. We've reported it to Mark Glass and also Governor DeSantis, and nobody is moving, and nobody is saying a word. You know why? Because everything that we're saying is true. So I've called up here to try to meet with you. I've sent you communications. You're running from those communications, and you're just running from the wrong people. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rodney. All right. Tom?
I apologize for my entire, I came from work, but I didn't realize the meeting was at 1:00. Dalton Nelson, Manatee County. There's a couple of things I want to talk about today, and first, I want to start this out with, I appreciate Mr. Bearden for helping me out and taking my concerns seriously and actually doing the work to ask the questions that need to be asked in this county. I've heard several commissioners on this board sit up here and complain about the supposed games that have been played with this consent agenda and pulling items from consent, and the state is going to take this away from us and this and that. When are we going to get serious on this board? That's my first question. Because there's a lot of things that happen up here on this board that you guys think we don't see, we see perfectly well, especially when we sit here in this chamber. Whoever runs these cameras are very inept to cut certain shots where certain commissioners smile, they look off into space. They don't take this job serious. And I want accountability for this county. There are several not accusations that are unfounded that I have made about serious questions with this stormwater study that still have not been addressed by staff, and it's wrong. The study, the Integra study, is wrong. I have physical proof that it was founded on unfactual information. Secondly, the other thing that I'd like to discuss is that, and I appreciate Mr. Ron for actually coming up to me during the recess, we have very dangerous situations here in this county regarding, for example, the port entrance. The port entrance is something that has the attention of a bunch of representatives trying to get the Florida Department of Transportation to take them seriously on fixing the issues where we are having truck overturns, we are having fatalities, and we are having multiple close calls with semi trucks pulling out in front of people trying to commute down 41. It is a horrible, horrible condition that has not been fixed for years. And the stormwater problem is not going to be fixed in a day. I understand that. But at the same time, all of the areas that you're looking in is not deep enough. If you're not looking farther up the stream and you're not trying to fix the problem farther in the weeds, you're not going to get to the issue. This issue goes way deeper and way longer than what you guys are looking into, and I am honestly embarrassed by certain people in this county and how they do their job. Why are we paying all of these public employees to come through and clean our ditches on 675, and they're not getting done? They haven't been done for years. And this is stuff that y'all could be doing that don't cost the taxpayers a lot of money. It's stuff that can be done a day. And yet our ditches still stay full of sedimentation and vegetation, and nothing gets done about it. When the road gang comes through and mows the ditches, it maybe gets done once a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last public comment, and then we're going to close public comment. We will reopen it at the end of the meeting.
All right, thank you. My name's Chris Whitaker. I'm in Manatee County. Thank you so much for having us here. Just wanted to represent our constituents out in District 1. Got some important things coming to land use and everything like that this week, and there's been a lot of concern with everybody. And thank you, Ms. Felts, for all the help that you've done. And I think your dress is lovely, by the way. Also, she's definitely the best dressed up here. Sorry, Mr. Cruz.
Man, bad at golf, can't dress. You're killing me here.
Sorry, man. Going after you. No, joking. But no, I respect all of every one of you guys. And Mike, I just had a question because obviously, you know, there's a lot of work that wants to be done, a lot of development and growth that you guys want. So I just want to share one thing that one of our constituents shared recently, and he stated in, this is Tony Tisulo, "And in the Manatee County Land Development Code, project timing is primarily addressed through the concurrency management system outlined in Chapter 8. The section ensures that new developments do not exceed the capacity of public facilities and services, thereby maintaining the adopted level of service standards. Before a development order is issued, the county evaluates adequate infrastructure such as roads, water supply, sewer systems, et cetera, and what's available to support the project." And my question is, like, when you guys don't go by this land development code and this process, like, how are you guys held accountable? There's a lot of developments that get approved that, you know, the infrastructure and these things aren't adequate. And, you know, there was a big election recently and big change, and I believe that the board before this was not, you know, staying within this process, and I think that's why there was a big change. And I respect Ms. Felts for being really outspoken about trying to get citizens here and having comments and keeping you guys accountable, or keeping everybody accountable. And I think recently after election, not many people came in, and I think that's because I think we really believed that the change would have really affected kind of the things that get, you know, voted on and approved. And we've seen some things still getting approved that probably shouldn't be because of the inadequate infrastructure. And so like, I would really like to see accountability. I'd love to see more people in here commenting too, but it's like a lot of us have work. You know, sometimes they're not at 9:00, sometimes they're at 1:00, the changes. I mean, Mr. Cruz, he would love to get through this meeting in like five minutes, you know? I can, you can see it. And it's tough. Like, we have to have discussions sometimes, and that's like good community. When we can have good discussions, we can get the best decisions made for the best of the community, for everybody. And so like, just something I would like to bring up and, you know, really like to put it back on the table and really get you guys, I guess, aware of the votes you make on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment. I will reopen it both for people in the room as well as people on the phone at the end of the meeting today. And we are going to move on to the actual agenda now. As I said this morning, we are moving a couple of the items up just to make sure we get to some of the ones that require more dialogue while we've got a full board. So we are going to jump ahead to whatever number I said first, number 55. County Administrator? Would you like to present this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. We've got DCA Brian Parnell, Carrie Knight, Charles Metter going to give a presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, they're bringing up the brief. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brian Parnell, Deputy County Administrator, and I appreciate the time to kick off this brief. Introduce an exciting opportunity for Manatee County, one that reflects both strategic foresight and fiscal responsibility. Today, we'll be discussing potential purchase of an existing building that would allow us to relocate several county departments. This move is part of a broader plan to align government operations with the county's current and projected growth patterns. Now, let me be clear. This initiative will not change the county seat. The Board of County Commissioners meetings, land use meetings, and related workshops will all continue to be held right here in the downtown commission chambers. This relocation strategy is both thoughtful and intentional. Establishing an additional county campus in a growth corridor brings services closer to where many residents and businesses are locating. It also supports our long-term vision of expanding access to county services across a growing population. Importantly, purchasing an existing facility is substantially more cost-effective than building a new one from the ground up. In today's presentation, we'll also have updates on our downtown parking garage, which is closely related to those cost savings I mentioned. You'll see that this move opens up valuable space in the downtown administration building, space that could accommodate the growing needs of the state attorney, supervisor of elections, county attorney, probation, and guardian ad litem. This building will not be empty. Other vacated county facilities will be repurposed to support EMS operations, the Manatee County Sheriff's Office, and our housing empowerment initiatives. Additionally, this plan helps the county meet new state requirements related to providing designated spaces for individuals experiencing homelessness. We are very optimistic about the opportunities this move creates for improved service delivery, smarter use of taxpayer dollars, and long-term operational efficiency for the county. With that, I'll turn it over to Charles Metter, our Deputy Director for Property Management, who will walk through some of the details on the acquisition. We just have a five or six-slide presentation which will hit on more of the points that I mentioned.
County Attorney, County Administrator. My name is Charles Metter, Deputy Director of Property Management. I'm very excited to present to you today the contract for sale and purchase for the property located at 9,000 Town Center Parkway. This property will serve as an east campus while the chambers and county seat will remain in their current location. For context, the current administrative building is just over 142,000 square feet. The building at 9,000 Town Center Parkway is two stories with approximately 101,000 square feet, situated on 11.2 acres of land. The property was recently appraised at $23.9 million, and the proposed contract price is $23.5 million, which is below the appraised value. The acquisition includes some furnitures, fixture, and equipment adding to the value of the purchase. The funding will come from the Parking Garage Fund, including $2.8 million contribution from Fund 147 and Development Services. The total all-in cost of the project is around $34.8 million, which includes cameras, IT network equipment, signage, moving services, energy-efficient improvements, new generators, and remodeling the second floor. Additionally, the property includes over 600 parking spaces for operational needs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carrie Knight, Director of Property Management.
Carrie Knight, Director of Property Management. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. So who could relocate to this building? Under this concept, staff from three buildings would relocate to 9,000 Town Center Parkway. Public Works, Natural Resources, Development Services, and Property Management would move in the first wave, placing all county construction locolicated on one floor. Later next year, financial management, government relations, county administration, and human resources would follow. Vacating the 26th Avenue Public Works Building could create space to support housing empowerment initiatives and help the county comply with new state regulations requiring counties to provide shelters or designated areas for unsheltered individuals. This site could also potentially accommodate services such as the Manatee County Sheriff's Office and the Manatee County Emergency Medical Services. By relocating staff who do not need to be in the county seat to 9,000 Town Center Parkway, the county can avoid the need for extensive or expensive office space that was previously planned as part of a parking garage/office building 3P redevelopment on the adjacent half-city block. This shift eliminates the county's potential financial contribution to the proposed 3P project for office space. The initiative can still move forward as a partnership between the City of Bradenton, Manatee County, and a private partner. For the same reason staff were being relocated to the potential adjacent 3P project and now proposed 9,000 Town Center Parkway, office space in the Manatee County Administration Building becomes available for organizations with a greater need to be near the court system. Slide 6 shows remaining occupants on the left and potential occupants on the right. The Manatee County Administration Building will not be empty. As the county grows, so does the 12th Judicial Circuit Court and other necessary services. Backfilling the Manatee County Administration Building maintains current occupancy levels, which in turn supports local downtown businesses. The Lena Road property plays a critical role in the overall plan, offering much-needed space for Public Works, Utilities, Manatee County Sheriff's Office, Manatee County Emergency Medical Services, as well as stormwater management and floodplain compensation related to both the Lena Road expansion and the development to the north. The discussion about the need for additional space began before the county acquired 1707 Lena Road in 2020. Lena Road in 2020. At this time, I'll bring Charles back up.
And Commissioners, just so you know, the following agenda, item 56, is to rescind Resolution R. 22176, which declared the 160 acres at 1707 Lena Road as surplus. If you'll recall, on January 28, 2025, a motion was made and it carried 7-0 to rescind the invitation to negotiate. Thank you.
Is that the presentation? I got almost everybody on the board. All right. Commissioner Sadiq.
Thank you, Chair. It's my district, but it significantly affects not just myself, but really all of west, Manti County, west of 75. Just have a couple of quick questions. You're moving a significant portion of the services many people rely on, come to this building in person for. I'm not necessarily a fan of making people drive all the way out to East County to get those services, whether they're Development Services, some or more, I think. Lakewood Ranch, I get the development, but it's not a real city. Most people still live in West Manti County. So I want to know what your plan is to ensure that we still have fair access to services, really across the county, to include, you know, virtual options or others. That's really the chief concern I've heard from my residents here.
Well, we're in discussions already, talking about, obviously, transit, public transit to the location, but I can't speak for Development Services, but I believe they do have virtual options for services already available or expanding in the future. Nicole, do you?
Good morning, or good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole, nap, Development Services. Approximately 2018, I think, early 18, we went to a cella as our permitting hub, and all of our application fees for both the planning and the building side. So a large part of our business is done virtually. We do have walk-ins. In the zoning lobby, it's very minimal. The bigger walk-ins come from the building side of the business, where those residents who want to do a permit themselves, or contractors that just have more one-on-one conversations. But most of what we do can be done virtually.
Understood. Thank you for that. Second question's actually around the 26th Avenue East property. If we can go back to that slide real quick. When I freed up, while you're doing that, when I introduced the motion to free up the Lena Road property, the vision I'd had was to ensure that we do have adequate space for our county staff. We don't necessarily know what the growth trends will look like. Maybe one day, West County will see a lot more development. So the only concern I have around here is being mindful of turning spaces over to nonprofits before we've done a comprehensive analysis to figure out whether our county has needs there. It's good proximity for quite a few services that residents might need in the future. Don't know what those are yet. But of course, MSO, EMS, EMS is top of mind for me. There's always challenges with service, and that's probably the easternmost major complex we do have. Not fundamentally opposed to something like Fresh Start, but I don't just want to see a consent item come up saying, "We were giving this away." Surprise. I do want to understand what are the needs for that portion of the county. It's not my district, but there's a significant population center there. So that's just my comment there.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll answer that question. We don't propose giving away that piece of property. That's the future headquarters of Fresh Start, which would be operated by MSO, will retain ownership of that parcel.
I understand. I don't remember this board approving that. So I just want to make it clear, there still needs to be a conversation with this board around ensuring services are still being provided to West County, not just shifting them east, which is, no offense to Lakewood Ranch, but that's, that location's not the center. I mean, the Lena Road property is. But I do understand why we don't necessarily want to build that new, considering Sarasota's spending 120 million on their parcel, which is just insane to me. But I do appreciate the mindfulness there. The last thing for me is just, I do support this in the end, I think. My wife works in, you know, the Garden Ad Litem. She tells me all the time, there's space constraints there. I've heard this left and right from the State's Attorney's Office clerks, not to mention, I think the price tag's closer to $100 million for the garage now. I need to do a quick poll to see, there's probably better uses for $100 million in the county right now, whether it's mix-in or other properties. I do want to see this site redeveloped. I've always had a vision, and I've said this pretty clear with the city of Bradenton, to bring a grocery store, housing redevelopment, contingent on, of course, providing public parking. I do think we're one step closer to that vision, and, you know, we had, just declared this whole week Economic Development Week. So I think it's a great parcel to do that on. There are a lot of great partners that have reached out, and I think they have great concepts, and it's going to service really all of West County if we got a grocery store, and certainly some parking here. As long as we're addressing concerns for residents in West County, I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself on the board, just so I want to make sure, clarifying some things, because we've gotten a couple of emails, some of them seemingly revisionist history. So just want to clarify a few things. People decided to take a run at assumptions on us without fact. One of the assumptions was, this is being done so that developers can get a hold of this building and build condos. We're not getting rid of this building. This building is going to be overfull once we move everybody out. People need to understand all the moving parts, because it's not as simple as, hey, we're getting rid of one thing and moving someplace else. That's what Sarasota did. That's what a lot of counties are doing. We're not doing that. We have a state attorney that we're obligated to provide space to, that can't fit their people in right now. If we're not buying this building, we're buying something or leasing something, because we're obligated to put the state attorney someplace. And we've looked at other options, and they were cost-prohibitive options, or options that were not sufficient for the state attorney. We have guardians ad litem that are sharing two, three, four people per an office, and they got to meet clients over there. And you have to have clients walking through judicial centers and past jails to get to meet with people. We have better options over here. We already have, we already have space here for the Commissioners, the Chambers. Those aren't changing. A vast majority of the public that comes, I know people come that talk to code enforcement, most of them come for days like today. They're coming for these meetings. They're coming to meet with their Commissioners. That's not going to change. That's going to be on a transit line. It's going to be next to the restaurants down here. That's going to have full access. What you're also going to have in East County is another office out there where Commissioners can also meet you, and you're going to have your services out there. So there's lots of benefits, because by doing this, we're moving our services out there, which is allowing all these important services like guardian ad litem, and state attorney, and supervisor elections, that's supposed to be in the city seat and is not, to all move over here. And by doing all that, we're also moving Public Works out there. By putting Public Works out there, it's giving us an opportunity to put Public Works next to property management, next to development services, so they can work more efficiently together in an open-floor plan to better plan out Manatee County without being in different floors, and in some cases, different buildings. There's a lot of benefits to this, but all we keep hearing is, we're selling this to get rid of developers. No, we're not. By moving, we're going to harm downtown, which is now a vibrant area. If the vibrancy of your downtown is based solely on government employees and jury duty, you don't have a vibrant downtown. We need to work on the vibrancy of downtown, and we're not eliminating this building. This building is going to be full. It's going to have the same ability for people to be here until exactly 5:01 PM, until they figure out a better way of doing this. People have said that, why aren't we using the Lena Road property? The comment was, you know, that's the real center. I do commercial loans for a living with a hedge fund. Right now, to build an office building costs between $400 and $500 a foot. To build a comparable office would cost us $40 to $50 million. That's not factoring in the fact, there's no utilities or anything else there that would have to be built in. We're buying this at a fraction of replacement cost. This is a benefit to the taxpayers to buy something so cheap. And we can buy it so cheap, because the office market is massively depressed right now due to work-at-home and other reasons, which is pushing down demand for office acquisition and ability to finance office, which is giving us a unique opportunity that we're not the only ones taking advantage of. Right now, Pinellas County is looking to move their county headquarters. Right now, Broward County is looking to move their headquarters to tune to $500 to $700 million. Palm Beach is looking to move with a budget of $260 million. Seminole County is selling their land, because they feel it's better to be used for development along the lake, and they're budgeting $500 million to go build a new facility. Pasco County is moving all of their departments, and Sarasota already sold their building to Benderson, and they're in the process of building a $74 million facility out on Cattlemen right now. More than $74 million, or they're building higher. I don't know what your finger was. But it doesn't matter. My point is valid. I do not need the exact number. The point is, a lot of people are spending a lot of money. I believe this is a tremendous discount that we're getting here for this. And the last thing is, when people talk about transparency, and I can appreciate that, we've been working on transparency. We've been working on making sure people have opportunities and have more speaking time. This is a contract. This is a contract that was for a property that was for sale in the public, that anybody could have bid on, for more than us. When Seafood Shack was first heard of, it's when a contract came in front of us before the diligence. When the property on golf course that we're purchasing for stormwater came, it was with a contract in front of us. And for everyone who wants to talk about Lena Road as the thing, in 2020, Lena Road was purchased by this, well, not, well, by this theoretical board, but nobody on this board. It was purchased for virtually, almost double the appraised value. The first time anybody in the public heard the concept of purchasing that property was October 13, 2020, when a contract with a no-out clause came in front of the board, having no prior knowledge whatsoever of it. It closed less than 30 days later, in an attempt to close that land before a new board came on, for double the appraised value, with no advance knowledge for the public. The advance knowledge was that in 2018, this county decided it needed to start considering moving services out east, because that's where the population trend was going. Sometimes something happens the next day, sometimes things happen a decade later. That was a policy of this government that has not changed. We've been continuously looking for opportunities to move out east. It's just a matter of when that opportunity presents itself. They believed Lena Road was the opportunity. When that presentation happened, I went back and watched it over the weekend, October 13, 2020. They showed a spreadsheet of showing the population trend, and I'm sorry, one of my Commissioners does not believe Lakewood Ranch is a real place, but, 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 back in 2020, the star on the map of what the population center was, was already east of I-75, five years ago. Now, think of all the new development that's happened in Parish, and Lakewood Ranch, and elsewhere, and imagine where that star is right now. It's certainly further east. It was further east than I-75 before. It's not getting better. So if their justification for purchasing Lena was because the population center was east of 75, that further supports this one right here. And to go back to your comment about it not being a real city, that's more to a point. I'm glad you mentioned that, because a vast majority of West Bradenton and District 3 is cities. They don't come here. They've got their own, they've got their own services. People at Holmes Beach don't have to come here on a regular basis. They have their own development services and permitting and code enforcement. They're not coming here. All those, a lot of the people out west, not all of them, there's a lot of people out west that are unincorporated in Manatee County, and I can appreciate, they may have to drive a little bit further to get to development services to the extent they need to go to development services. But a big chunk of West Bradenton is City of Bradenton. Where we're sitting right now is City of Bradenton. Everything on the island is there. Everything north of here is City of Palmetto. Where the people are entirely unincorporated is out east. They're the ones that need the services. They're the ones who have waited patiently for an opportunity to have their Commissioners have an office in closer proximity to them, their ability to engage with their government more. And we have a unique opportunity to buy a property at a tremendous discount to purchase, that is turnkey-ready with cubicles already in place, to create better efficiency for this government at a fraction of the cost, and then start a trend that's going to move all these other departments into more efficient, better uses of this space here, while also freeing up 26th for a lot of great opportunities, whether it's Turning Points, Fresh Start, and MSO, and EMS. This is the linchpin start of a change in how this government and its buildings are going to be, to better work with the citizens of Manatee County, and what I feel is a tremendous savings to the citizens. I'm 100% in support of this. Thank you. Commissioner Ballard.
Commissioner Cruz, I believe that a lot, that that was all very, very well said. I did just want to be very clear that, you know, for any of my constituents, I will be here, in this office, for the most part. So any meetings that you want to have with me are going to be right here, will be here in chambers. Also, for unlike Commissioner Sadiq, not, it won't be a whole lot further for all of my citizens. For some of my citizens, it will be. However, most of them are located in either City of Bradenton or City of Palmetto. So for those people, they still will have their city government that is a little, a little closer in proximity. I do think that the overall benefit to the county in acquiring this building is extensive. I think that it is in the best interest of the entire community, including people in my district. I am very excited about the potential for establishing Fresh Start Manatee at, in my district, at 26th Street. It is the perfect location for that type of facility, and I will tell you that addressing homelessness is a huge concern for people in my district. I hear it almost every day, and so that is a quality-of-life issue for people all over my district, and frankly, all over the county, but particularly in our urbanized districts. And so I, that is a huge benefit to me in making this happen. So I'm excited about bringing this forward, and I think that it will be very good for the entire county.
I'm glad you used that finger, not the other one that I've been seeing. I want to let you know that you're welcome over in East County anytime you want to come over. The thing is that East County is the highest-growing facility. We have more than 80,000 people there already, and, you know, it is an area where it's going to continue to grow, probably because, you know, it's better advertised right now, and doesn't have as much storm problems. But there are a lot of questions, and, you know, I do have to ask these questions, because, you know, I said I would do this while you were away in Washington. The questions are, when did this building come available? And why wasn't it advertised to the public that this building was available before we started looking at it?
Yeah, sir, I can answer that, please. Yeah. It came available approximately two months ago. We were in negotiations, we're doing our due diligence. There's currently two tenants in the building, and we want to be cautious. We are transparent, but also don't want to bid against ourselves. And so we were careful consideration while we were doing our due diligence process. Again, this contract's bringing forward to you today, but the close date's not until September.
The other question they had was, who actually owns that building right now?
Yeah, go ahead, Charles.
Charles Metter, Deputy Director, Commissioner. The owner is Inson LLC from Delaware. The vesting deed is CMHC 9,000 JV LLC.
Okay, because, you know, again, they just want to make sure there's no sweetheart deals here. The rumor mill ran rampant last week. And, you know, the thing is that...
I can answer. Who wants? Just to let you know, it's a company called Contrarian. It's a publicly traded REIT out of Connecticut.
Okay, who's occupying the building right now?
Yeah, I can answer that, too. We have FEMA on the second floor currently. That's why we can't move in initially. There's a contract in place on the second floor, and we have TriNet on the first floor in a small area.
Okay. And the services that you're going to put over there, you're going to put them over there in increments, correct? You're not going to close down the county building?
No, sir. It's a phased approach. We were hoping to do it during the summer recess, you know, and that would have been the prime opportunity, but unfortunately, we didn't make that deadline. So the first phase would be starting in September with property management moving in. They're going to be there to ensure that it's a smooth move, and then following, Development Services would be in. We've got the moving companies lined up, just in case this is approved. We haven't issued any POs at this time. And then following that would be our Public Works out of 26th Avenue.
Okay. And the Commissioner from District 5 will have an office in there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'll give more access to the people over there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other question they had was, you know, as far as parking and transportation goes, you know, how many parking spots are available? Who would they be to? And are you going to be leasing back any of that building to the current occupants?
Currently, we are trying to close the current lease, and Charles can speak to that. There's over 600 parking spaces, approximately 602, 620, that we're going to utilize. I forget your third question.
Are you going to lease back anything to the occupants?
No, sir. This will be a county-owned facility with county employees.
Okay. Now, the other question they had was the county employees. What will that do to their journey to work?
Yeah. We have considered that. We have been very considerate with the current county employees. We have been very considerate with the, the current county employees. We'd like to communicate with them, but we can't get ahead of ourselves too quickly until this is approved. We have informed all directors. We've talked about this numerous times during our director's meeting. I've asked Transit to, to look into how we can get transit at the site. Currently, there, there is no transit at this location.
That's because we don't like the West people coming over.
Yeah. We understand that there will be some people that won't be happy moving, driving that far, but there's a lot of employees like myself who live in Parish who've been doing this commute for 15-plus years.
Okay. So it really wouldn't be a bigger burden to the people here?
It could potentially be a burden for people that live in St. Pete currently that do drive to this facility, yes. But again, we're trying to accommodate each one of those employees and have that one-on-one conversation through their director.
Okay. A couple of newspapers asked, you know, after this meeting, you know, can you answer their questions?
Be more than happy to.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. I've got Commissioner Ron, then Commissioner Bearden, then Commissioner Phelps. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I appreciate your comments. They were 100% spot-on. Compared to other alternatives, this, this property is great for what we need to do and how we need to expand. Sarasota's been brought up several times, how much money they're having to spend just on a new building, and Commissioner Cruz and I both understand the cost of real estate today, and we could not afford to build a building of this without the citizens burning us an effigy on every street corner coming up and trying to do this. Again, we are required, we are required to put, we are required to have space for MSO. And as we know, MSO is growing. At some point, they're going to be taken over, supervised elections. We've got to put them somewhere, and that's probably be in this building. State Attorney, Garden, Light, we can go down the list of who needs, who needs more space as the county grows. And this facility would be perfect for them to go into. We've talked about the garage. There's no way we're going to fix this garage. There was never a maintenance agreement by previous boards that authorized this garage. They've never put one maintenance agreement on it. We are band-aiding this garage every month, every quarter. We're doing inspections to make sure that this garage doesn't fall down at some point or collapse on itself because it's never had a maintenance agreement on it. So this is the best option. I mean, 26th is perfect fresh start. That's going to be a great spot for, to do that. And Lena Road, we know we all paid for Lena Road. We only rehashed that. But if we're going to have to go out there, now we're going to have to go out there and develop that site. Wait, should be the cost of develop that site, to bring in infrastructure, to bring in stormwater, to bring in the roads, that was required to do under the, under the contract that nobody on this board signed, that's required to do out on Lena Road with infrastructure, building roads, and then putting buildings out there. So this is a great opportunity for us. We're getting it at a great price. It's already got everything in it. Everybody's already talked about it. So I'm 100% for this move and, and support it, and I will be voting yes on the contract. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to have a few questions. As I ask these questions, they're just mainly for transparency so that everybody knows kind of what's going on. My main concern right now currently are going to be operations on staff, Charlie, okay? With the commute times being a lot longer, you know, as they are, you know, because we're talking about change man, we're talking about change right now, and people do not like change, as you know. That being said, retention, have we thought about that currently and how we're going to manage that process?
Yes, sir. Again, we are going to have individual conversations with any employee that has a hardship. We understand that change is difficult. I can give you an example. Yesterday, when we had a gridlock coming downtown, there's days, there's evenings, there's spring training, there's times that we can't even get to this building due to the commute. We're hoping the commute is a better drive each and every day for our county employees.
Okay. And are we creating a transition plan to ensure operational continuity?
Yes, sir. We have. We've got a floor plan in place. Again, we have had preliminary discussions with each director that's being affected, putting a, a name associated with each cubicle and/or office. And that plan has been, is still fluid because, again, we didn't want to get it too far ahead of ourselves.
Okay. And when it comes to, I know we use a cellar, but when it comes to technology systems across the county and records management, do you see or foresee any disruption during the move?
Right now, sir, we don't plan on moving our records management department on two, along with the mailroom. They're still going to stay behind. There will be a week or two of, of disruption as we move and get accommodated to our new surroundings. We have to move our phones, our computers and such, but the government will not stop, the, the process will not stop. We're going to leave people behind here as we move to the current building.
Okay. So you're going to leave a, a leave-behind element in the current buildings until we're fully secure in, in, in the main building if we decide to do this?
Yes, sir. We're hoping weekends and nights, a lot of the moving is, is taking place. That way, there will be no disruption to our services.
Got it. And have we done any type of traffic impact studies that have been conducted on that new site to see how that's going to affect traffic and within that area, knowing that, you know, we're moving all our buildings and services out there now? Have we looked at that, or is that something we're going to look at in the future?
Well, again, sir...
And when will we get a report on that?
Again, sir, the, the building comes with over 600 parking spaces, so that traffic study was accomplished when the building was built in 1998. I don't believe that we are doing any type of current traffic studies.
Okay. All right. My only, my only thing is that we're going to have a lot of people coming into that specific area, not just the parking spaces with employees, but county residents. You know, if that's going to affect it, that's just my only, my only question in regards to that. So if, if we're solving the problems with this move, what are we solving? What type of problems are we solving currently?
Well, currently, we're out of space in this facility. Again, it was built in the 80s, and you, you've known and you've seen the constant renovations who try to accommodate the growth in the FTEs. Again, the state attorney, I cannot get him any more space until we vacate this facility. I've had conversations with the clerk of the court. She has space problems on her third floor. I have space problems with Garden, Ed Lighton probation. I have not discussed this with the public defender, but I'm sure, just like all the 12th Circuit Court, they need more and more office space.
Got it. And not just with the building within itself, but the total cost of the move, have we thought about that, right, currently with that total cost of the move's going to cost us?
Yes, sir. Again, the building's running as 23.5. I believe the budget amendment's for 34.5. Part of that budget amendment, again, we, we need to bring county fiber to the facility. There are some general updates, upgrades we need to do with camera systems, cars, card swipes, the current generator, but the moving expenses is accommodated. One thing also I'd like to point out, Development Services, which is an enterprise fund, is paying a portion of this facility, I believe 12%.
12.5%.
12.5% is coming from our Development Services.
Okay. All right. And how do we plan on having the public informed and engaged throughout this process?
Yes, sir. There's a press release getting ready to go out as soon as, if, if and when this is approved. We're going to do constant updates on our website. We'll be getting, using Facebook and our X accounts. We'll probably put something in our utility mailers. We'll do everything and anything we can to make sure the word's out.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
All right. And just so, so you know, Commissioner Bearden, because I have an uncanny ability of timing my, my town halls like a year out at the exact right time in the right place, next Monday, I've got a town hall at the Lakewood Ranch Library. So if the public wants information, I'll be there. Commissioner Phelps.
I think everyone, I wanted to wait to speak pretty much towards the end because I think that sometimes it's not what we do, it's how we do it. And I wanted to thank Charlie for bringing up a subject that apparently has riled everybody up, got them involved again, and they're searching for information and education because it does seem like this is being sprung on the public. But it, it would be nice to have a presentation with five options of five different properties that we could look at. That'd be great. But sometimes it doesn't work out that way. And sometimes we have to do things that may, may not make sense at the time, but there's a reason for it. We don't have, we've, look, we've grown in this county that we needed more room for our county staff six years ago when we bought the Lena Road property. So we're already behind. It's from six years ago when we bought the, bought the Lena Road property and did nothing. Now we've got an opportunity for one, and I realize it hits people pretty hard. When you're telling people you're going to pay $30 a month for a 96-pound garbage can once a week pick up instead of two, and then you turn around and you buy a $35 million building for yourself, it doesn't go over very well, does it? When you've jumped the gun on putting in a software system, upgrading your software system to do water billing, and we have people getting $7,000 bills, and then you turn around and say, "We're going to go buy a $35 million building for our office people," it doesn't sit very well, does it? But sometimes you have to take a little bit of pause and not jump into the criticism of the moment. Not a single person out there gave us one moment to read the agenda, to look at the documents, to understand what we're trying to do. I'm going to have very high expectations on, is increasing the size of our county offices going to correct the issues that we're having with our water billing? Is it going to make sure that our garbage is picked up on a consistent, once-a-week basis? Is it going to answer to our request for more transparency in our land use issues with citizen advocates? If this purchase is going to do that and allow our staff to work more efficiently, isn't it decent of us to give them a chance? And I'm probably the most fiscal conservative person up here, and I'll never believe you're a fiscal conservative until, until you've been poor. You'll never, you'll never be there. But there are some times that we've got to have a little bit of an open mind, and this all came down just on, you know, everybody's up in DC, we're upset about our garbage, we're upset about our water, we are upset about our shelter not being completed. Timing kind of hurts, but if there were five properties out there that we could say, "Here's a choice of five properties that you could look at," but unfortunately, there's not. And timing is something, because if you don't think that we snatched this up, don't you think somebody else's? So I ask that you, I would wish that we could come up here and have a meeting where they present five properties, and we could make a choice, and we could even let you guys vote directly on that. But that's not how things work. So I, I want you to give this a chance. I, I know you're upset because it seems like we're spending your money, but we're not giving you the services. I know that you think that we're spending your money and we're not putting all the cards out on the table. We're going to go, we're going to have higher expectations for transparency because y'all are going to have more room to do your jobs better. We're going to, we're going to expect, we're going to expect better. So be forewarned about that. I've known of this county, I, I worked in the design-build industry when this building, our old jail, some of these facilities were built, you know, in the 80s, yeah. These are old buildings. Our population has grown, and I'd like our citizens to give us a chance to, to promote this, to understand this. I do not agree with taking a vote on it today, but that's the way the cookie crumbles. I don't think anybody's going to ask to delay it. But we've got some good sense in here. And go ahead and, you know, think that there wasn't anything transparent about it, but unfortunately, sometimes this is the way these things go. And hold them to a higher standard, okay? So if you're willing to give us a chance that this is a good deal for us, you also are entitled to hold them to another standard. Is it going to be difficult for them to come back and say, "And we'd like to up your taxes and instill a stormwater fee when we just spent $35 million on giving you a new office space?" Oh, yeah, it is, isn't it? Hold them to a higher standard, but also give people the chance to work things out. These county employees live where you live. They travel where you travel. And give them a chance to have a working environment that's safe and efficient, and they can get the job done, but hold them to a higher standard because of it. Thank you.
All right. Everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Commissioner Sadiq, is there anything new you want to add? I'd like to go to public comment at some point so you can keep this moving.
Go to the attorney first here on the board, right? I can go after you.
Well, I think she just has a quick statement, so I was waiting. Commissioners, go. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention briefly the issue of the county seat so that the board understands that the principal offices and the permanent records of all county officers must remain within the City of Bradenton, but you can have satellite or secondary offices out there. And if this transact, if this purchase is eventually approved, and if we do end up moving out there, the board should by resolution authorize the branch offices. So that would be a step we'd take later in the process because this is outside of the county seat.
Thank you. Commissioner Sadiq, is there anything you have to add, or can I go to the public?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Look, jokes aside about Lakewood Ranch, I think this is a microcosm of a broader challenge. I think there's a great fear, and I'm going to be fighting for my residents on this, too, that we're overly focused on east. I like Lakewood Ranch. I, I go there all the time. Why? Because we don't have redevelopment opportunities there. So the thing I would like to see from staff is an open and fair redevelopment process. I think we've had challenges with that before with other public properties, because I do want to see this redeveloped, and I do see a great potential here. But I want to challenge this board to ensure that services are provided fairly. We have Cortez, we have West Bradenton, certainly the cities as well, and all the great things that happened in East County, I want to ensure that they continue to happen for West Manti County as well. We're paying for a significant amount of the development and growth there. $34 million is coming out of thin air. It's coming out of the redevelopment fund for the garage. $140 million lines of credit, the interest is borne by everyone, not just East Manti County. So we'll continue to fight for West County and my district in particular. I'll continue to raise the issue of ensuring services are fairly provided for residents as they've challenged me to do so. But I do appreciate the opportunity for redevelopment. I welcome it, and I'll continue to challenge staff to ensure we're being fair with our services countywide. Thank you.
I don't mind those, actually.
All right. One at a time, one at a time. Let's get through this first. Not a chance. We are going to public comment. I've got one. Ruth. Ruth Arunchar?
Ruth is the easy part.
That's why I stopped at Ruth, but then I figured I'd give it a shot.
Ruth Arunchar, Manatee County resident, president of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League of Women Voters of Manatee County is here to express our concern regarding the lack of transparency regarding the purchase and improvement of a property in Lakewood Ranch on the Manatee-Sarasota County line. The lack of any public discussion about this purchase represents poor governance. We observe the regular board meetings and have not observed any previous public discussion by the county of this need for a new property, nor any assessment or analysis of the existing office space, nor a comparative analysis of the proposed purchase. The purchase price for the property of $23.5 million appears to come from funds earmarked for a new county parking garage to replace the current aging structure. There has been no public discussion of new plans regarding the existing garage. Also of concern is that the county must execute multiple financial and legal moves in order to purchase, renovate, and occupy this property. The review by the county's legal staff raises more concerns about what they describe as a, quote, "complex transaction," unquote, with two tenants to deal with as well as multiple entities making up the, quote, "seller," unquote, of the property, including one that the legal department advises the county to receive, quote, "additional written assurances from," unquote, prior to any sale. from," unquote, prior to any sale. The legal department assumes that the staff has done adequate background work on all the required business transactions, but they don't provide any verification of that. The public is not reassured that all these legal concerns are being adequately addressed. There hasn't been adequate discussion in public about this purchase. The League of Women Voters of Manatee County recommends that the budget resolution be tabled for further discussion and debate following today's presentation. The public deserves to know what will become of the existing parking garage. The public deserves to know that any transaction will be trustworthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Andrew Griffin, Manatee County advocate. I don't even know what to say with this, because this is off of Lena. Isn't that the reason why we bought Lena? Now Lena's not good, now we need this property out there. I feel like this is self-serving. Everybody up here said this is good for the county, this is good for the citizens. Did you ask any of us? None of us knew about this. None of us. Not one time was the county, the community, the residents ever consulted on this purchase. And now we're finding out it's another thirty-four million, thirty-five million dollars that was put on a consent.
This is not consent.
The inflated garage cost. Man, selling the sizzle, not the steak, hundred million dollars to fix the garage, hundred million. Man, it's cheaper for us to get a building out east. Not once were we ever consulted. You said, "But look at this, look at this counties, look at Sarasota County, look at Palm Beach, look at how many people have changed their location," right? It's kinda funny, because these are all blue counties. These are all Democrat-led counties. Palm Beach, Sarasota, a lot of people moved their, George listed, Miami, didn't you say Miami Day, too? I'm pretty sure you said a whole bunch of counties, and I'm listening to them, I'm like, man, they're irresponsible counties. You know, who you sounded like for the first time? Misty Servia. Misty Servia, because she used to do that to jack up our taxes here. Remember that? Let's not forget that. Oh, look at Pasco County, right? Look at Sarasota. Heck, look at Palm Beach. We need a fourteen percent increase on our taxes because Palm County, Palm Beach, raised their taxes. This is a self-serving move, in my opinion. We were not consulted on this. Don't tell me what I think should be good for me, because moving something all the way out to Lakewood Ranch when we've got traffic all over the roads, making people commute literally from West Bradenton all the way out east, when we don't even have our infrastructure on the roads completed. This is a poor decision. Let's not forget Lena. Let's not forget. God bless.
I was not aware office buildings were partisan. Any other public comment?
For the record, Glenn Gibbela, I did send this to all of you today. It's a great article by Don Kinnerman. So, I suggest you read it. I have real concerns about this. You say east. There is nothing east about this property. It's at the farthest southern part of Manatee County. So when you say, "Oh, it's east," no, Lena Road is east. This is anything but east. Again, let's talk about, from their own attorney, they are not favorable. That's what it says. That's what they wrote. Don't you even listen to the attorneys? We have not reviewed any accuracy of this contract. Listen to your attorneys. This needs to be shelved until all your dots can be aired. This is absolutely crazy. As far as staff, I don't think, I don't think you talk to staff at all. I spent a few hours in this building. People loathe moving, disrupting their lives. They got kids in school, they got daycare, right? Now they gotta manage their lives on, "How am I gonna get my kids from that school and go to that daycare? Or I gotta bring them out to Lakewood Ranch?" Well, that daycare's got a waiting list, and it's twice as expensive. You have not talked to employees, absolutely not. You know, another thing is, I bet nobody's even mentioned, "Hey, how about the Palmetto Animal Shelter? We've got acreage there, we could stick some department over there," right? And how about a few years ago? Nine-twenty, you gave that place away for a hundred grand, right? And I'm gonna go to the open house there next week, but you could have had another nine stories right across the street. Where was the vision when you gave that property away for a hundred grand? I don't get it. This is a terrible location, you're disrupting lives, you have not done your due diligence, listen to your attorneys. Didn't you learn your lesson at the port? With contaminated land and clouds in the tidal, this property isn't any different. Your own attorney says, "There's problems with it." Talk to your employees. I am telling you, you're in a bubble here, because you're not in reality when you're gonna talk about disrupting a lot of people's lives. The state's attorney, let him go buy another building. You know, he's...
It's still your tax dollars that they be buying the building with.
Well, put him over at the animal shelter. Anyways, this is a terrible idea.
Okay, I'm gonna tell Ed to move to the animal shelter.
You got a bad policy where you get sucker punched at the last minute. Oh, that's, we don't hear about it till we get it. Well, fix it. We wanna hear about it earlier.
All right. Any more public? Any more public comments?
My name's Garland Parham. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-four. I lost two sons in this county by accidents, none of their own. Somebody ran over them, killed them. Another reason I stay here, I had ten kids, five boys and five girls. I was a welder by trade. You can't tell me that you can buy something thirty years old and move into it and say you don't have to do nothing to it. You gotta rearrange the whole thing. You ain't gonna buy a car thirty years old, are you? Hell, no you're not. I know you're not. Not unless you give it a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it, and somebody done took care of everything. You can't tell me that property out there is gonna be better than what you already in. There's no way. Sure, you need to go somewhere else, but that was the whole distance of Lena Road, right? I mean, that was the whole object. Don't shake your head at me, I'm just telling you, I live here. I pay my taxes. And I thought Ed Chance was the worst son of a bitch that ever lived.
Any other public comments about Ed Chance or any other former commissioner?
Norman Paley, Manatee County. I'm gonna go against the grain. It's an opportunity cost that's gonna save, what, seventy million roughly? Why wouldn't you be doing it? As a taxpayer, I like the idea of saving money. So I understand those inconveniences, but we've all been inconveniences in our lives, having to get on planes to go to jobs, et cetera, et cetera. It's part of life. You're gonna have to get used to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm actually gonna change my preconceived notion that I came to this meeting with about this agenda item and actually say, hearing all the statements and facts, I'm kinda for it. I'm not gonna lie to you. I think it's a good investment opportunity. I'm glad Mr. Bearden brought up the fact of employee retention. I wanna give you a quick little fact I learned the other day. Manatee County, as far as a county entity retaining employees and, in turn, able to not have to spend more money to train other employees or source other employees, is piss poor. In fact, we've lost four county employees that investigate stormwater infrastructure with these new developments in the last six months. These county employees went private, because it pays better. There are other areas to which there are people sitting in this room we are losing because the county does not pay them enough. Okay? That's the first thing. The other thing is, is that the parish area since the early two thousands has increased growth, two-hundred-and-ninety-five percent. I looked it up. Well, I got news for you. The development problem, why the development department needs to be so big, is starting to stagnate. While it's a great idea to shove some of these other departments out there, you guys seriously need to talk to your staff, and you really need to figure out, what are you gonna do if the housing market takes another hit like two thousand and eight, and the development department may not be, need to be as big? The homeless problem that Ms. Ballard has talked about multiple times, I agree with her one-hundred percent, it is a huge problem. I was actually in a McDonald's, of all places, in the city of Bradenton, and it was the first time I ever seen a sign inside the McDonald's that said, "No loitering, thirty-minute time limit." Because they have so many problems with the homeless coming in there and loitering, because they don't have anywhere else to go. There's a lot of issues in this county that you guys need to adjust to. I think this is probably a good solution, one-hundred percent, if you address those areas. And there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be updated that unfortunately, it's gonna cost you a lot of money, because people haven't done it before you. We need a wastewater treatment plant in North County. That's gonna be a big-ticket item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here in the room? Seeing none, I've got two hands raised on the phone. First one is number four-four-one.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Commissioner Anthony Chulo, Manatee County resident. Similar to Mr. Nelson there, I wasn't exactly sure I agreed with this idea, but I will say, I'm all for it. I understand you guys are growing and, you know, shrinking of government if we do have a downturn. Yes, that's kinda the good with the bad. Mike, I do have a question, and maybe you might have one as well for staff, but if you're not gonna invest in the parking garage, are you gonna completely divest in it? Is it gonna go public, or are you just gonna sell it altogether? Because I'm just curious about the employees that will still reside in that building in downtown, will there still be a need or capacity for parking if you guys completely divest in the parking structure that's there? But otherwise, it would be nice to get all of these divisions together, because some of these projects and all of this planning across the entire county, it just gets lost in the shuffle in that building. So, thank you again for the time and the comment. And I had just one other thing earlier. You talked about impact fees not being part of those, that ability to recoup some impact. But I mean, if you free up utility funds...
Still different.
Those impact fees that go towards your utility department actually end up being helpful to everyone, so, thanks.
Thank you. We got two other callers. Just let you know, Tony, because it's a quick answer. Utilities, to improve those, our facility investment fees, we're actually working on expanding those as well, so stay tuned on that one. Okay, caller eight-eight-six.
My name is Cynthia Keo. I live out in parish. And I'm not sure if this is the right place to bring it, but I'm not sure of any other way to bring it to the attention of the board. There is zero requirement or planning on how close to a residential neighborhood you can place a gas station?
Cynthia, Cynthia, I'm not trying to interrupt you, I just wanna cut you off. We're on a specific agenda item relative to the potential purchase of an office building. I do know what you're going to refer to. I was out of town when you sent the email. You're on my list to reach back out to. If you do wanna talk about it, you're more than welcome. At the end of the meeting, we will be opening up public comment again. That will be the right time to talk about it, but right now, we're in the middle of an actual agenda item. But if you just wanna hold up, I do have your email about what you're referring to.
Yeah, I'll be happy to hold on for that. But in regards to the office building, I don't have any facts and figures, but all I can see is that anytime I try and go down to Lakewood Ranch, to that area, it's just a nightmare of traffic, going in and out of there, even on a Saturday. So trying to bring traffic that's trying to get out to jobs and then bringing all of your staff into that area, it's just gonna compound more interstate crashes, more Route seventy, Route sixty-four, university. It's not gonna be feasible without more improvements to the roads first. It's just gonna be a nightmare for all residents and all of your employees at the same time. That's my comment on the office building.
All right. Thank you, Cynthia. What do I have left? Caller one-eight-nine, the last caller on the line. One-eight-nine?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Doc.
Okay. This is Don Kinnerman, and I apologize for my voice, and this is why I'm not there, because I sound like Commissioner Bearden today. I was not going to call for public comment, but I am watching the proceeding, and I wanna make it clear that I am calling in my capacity as a citizen. And the reason I did decide to call is because, I mean, there are lots of questions that I could ask at this moment and whatever. I understand that's not the purpose of public comment, is answering every single question that somebody has as a citizen. But I did feel compelled, well, let me say this first. I'm not fundamentally against any sort of idea, as a citizen, of expanding or rearranging, reorganizing, finding placements, you know, further east, or making things a little bit more evenly distributed throughout the county in terms of the government and public access to that, or putting public facilities in higher-growth areas or anything like that. But the reason that I did call is because there was an update to the contract, and no one has mentioned that. And there was mention about how the purchase includes the FFE, which is the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And the update that was to the contract states that that what is included in the purchase in terms of furniture, fixture, and equipment would be decided after the contract is executed. And so I don't know if any of the commissioners have kind of an idea of like the going rate of cubicles on, you know, like used cubicles, what those cost, but they're not cheap. And so I don't, the details aren't there, because there's not a list of exactly what the furniture, fixtures, and equipment may be. But in the revised contract, it says, you know, after execution, then there will be a list created based on those FFE which have, quote, "been contemplated." And so I don't know for sure, I'm not trying to state that this could be a value in terms of a million-plus dollars. But I did wanna raise that, because no one has said anything, and I wanna make sure that the commissioners are aware, that that element of this purchase, if it's, you know, a thousand used cubicles and some other things, the price for purchase should maybe be less than what is being negotiated versus if it's like a couple million dollars worth, because that changes how much needs to be spent at the end to outfit this building for what the county needs. And so I just, I wanted to highlight that, because it does seem like this is going through today, and that's fine. Again, I really don't have a personal objection to the idea of scattering and creating new places for public service, but I just wanna make sure in terms of the deal and the value of the deal, that the commissioners are aware, that that is an element that is undecided at the time of the contract's execution. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, Don. That is the, whoop, is that a new hand raised? Six-nine-seven, did I call that one? Are you new?
Hi, Deana Stabel, Manatee County resident. Just listening to everything, I was waiting for open public comment, but I thought I would jump on here and echo what the caller said two calls ago about the traffic. I don't really have a position about the building and what you intend to do with Um, I don't really have a position about the building and what you intend to do with it, but recently having moved out into Mayaca and experiencing the traffic and starting to follow community pages that are related to the traffic and specifically out west. Um, I'm sorry, other way, east, um, directionally challenged apparently. Um, we have, Jason Bearden has spoken about it. There are catastrophic accidents happening regularly, like weekly out there as the road use is right now. And we are in the process of all of these houses being built up and coming to 675, coming up 64. And, you know, there's one lane, it's all one-lane roads with these turnoffs to get in and out of the sub with people yielding into traffic that's going far more than 60 miles an hour. And to push all of this rush hour traffic in and out is going to seemingly put a big burden on an infrastructure that already doesn't exist and needs to be increased substantially. And I haven't heard anyone today speaking of what you will be doing to help ease that. If you do go forward with purchasing this building, what are you going to do about the increase of traffic? That's really my big question, and I'd like to hear you discuss more about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. There's no one else on the phone, so I'm going to close public comment. I've got Commissioner Felts, myself, and Commissioner Bearden on the board. Commissioner Felts?
I think, I think, I mean, we've pretty much all stated up here that we see good reasons for getting this done. I think we've also heard from the citizens that you're not really sure this is a great idea. I know that time is of an essence, but I think I would like for the board to consider, maybe we just need more communications on this. Maybe we just need to take a little time out of respect for our citizens, because that's the bottom line to it. Okay? You know that, we all know that if we make this decision up here, we're, we're, we've already gotten a lot of feedback from this. I think to be fair, if you want to be fair and listen, we, maybe we've got to do a better job. Maybe we've got to do a better job of communicating what the plan is, why we feel this is a good idea. Obviously, none of us up here have said that we think it's a bad idea, but boy, have we heard from you guys. So maybe we've got to take a little step back.
I haven't heard.
And make, I haven't seen anybody say, "I think it's a bad idea." I mean, I, I, I see, I see the pros and cons, but apparently, we haven't done a very good job of explaining the reasoning for this and why we think it's a good idea when you guys don't. And I think that means something. I think out of some consideration for our citizens, we, we need to have some respect for that. And if it is that great an idea, and if it is gonna do so much for our county, then it should be easy. But I think what the problem is, it's communication. It's springing, and listen, people, these things do not spring up, okay? It takes a lot of work to get these deals done. It's only been a few months, but I get what you're saying. We're not seeing the animal services, we're not seeing that getting done, we're not getting that done. But we, we have, I, I just want the board to give some consideration to our citizens' comments and give them the facts. If this is such a good deal, it shouldn't be that difficult to communicate to our citizens why it's a good deal. But with the amount of pushback that we've been getting, we need to do better. We need to do a better job. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
Thank, thank you. I'm mainly on, just to quickly respond because we, so we can move on to the public comment, but just to, this is literally the nicest major project I think we've ever had in terms of citizen comment. I mean, I've got 4,000 emails about one intersection in my inbox right now. Half the comments were positive here. We had people coming up saying, "I wasn't sure, but this sounds good to me." We have a lot of people saying, "I'm not against this," but this, this is literally the best-case scenario of anything I've done in four and a half years on this board. I mean, people usually come up here just screaming at us to scream at us. This is not something, I don't know, like, like someone asked, "Oh, we didn't discuss this in public." I don't know how anyone's ever negotiated things in life, but this was not an off-market deal. This was listed by Ian Black, a major commercial broker, who was reaching out to any potential buyers. If we would've come up here on this dais in a public meeting and said, "We're looking at 9,000 Town Center Parkway. We're thinking of offering this much money. Let's have an open dialogue about this." There would've been an offer on that property before we finished the meeting. You can't have an open dialogue about, about that kind of property. That's not how the world works. I get the concept of transparency. We do our best for transparency. We post things on agendas. I've put additional comment periods on here. I have town halls every month. Many people up here have town halls, but we cannot negotiate open-market contracts in real-time on this dais. That's not how the world can possibly work. And to say, "Well, it hasn't been discussed," it was. Government's just slow. And what people say when they say things weren't discussed is, "It wasn't discussed yesterday. It wasn't discussed recently. Maybe I forgot," but things were discussed. We had a lengthy, all-day-long work session on parking garages, and we talked ad nauseam about that parking garage. And I mentioned how when I lived in New York City, I used to sell air rights over buildings, and there's lots of air rights that could be utilized by somebody there. And we could have someone else build us a parking garage for free as a condition of taking the land, and then they can use the air rights at City of Braden to it. We had this conversation. We didn't have this conversation last week, but we can't have every conversation over and over again on a monthly basis to remind everybody of previous conversations. Things take time. We have to plan ahead for things. So we have had conceptual conversations about what to do with this parking garage. We have, in 2018 and 2020, had conversations about moving the county out east. The staff has been tasked to continuously look for opportunities, just like we haven't spoken about the landfill in quite some time. The staff is still tasked with going out and finding eventually a thousand-plus-acre parcel of land that's suitable for a landfill. They haven't forgot about it. It's just, it takes time to find those right opportunities to present to the board. We don't have to rehash it every couple of months. They, they know the task, and sometimes it's gonna be a few years down the road. This, this is a, if you told me a few years ago, a few months ago, that for this price, we can create this much benefit for the county, I would've just said you were a liar. There's no physical way. For this dollar amount, not only are we gonna create more efficient use of our staff space, but we are going to create the space that the state attorney's been clamoring for for two years. Create space for guardian and alitem. Create space for the supervisor elections to move over into the city seat where they're supposed to be. Create space for the sheriff to take over the supervisor election space that he's been clamoring to do since I've been on this board. Create space to create fresh start in a relocation near transit and near healthcare and near nonprofits, where previously, there was talk about putting a bunch of tents up by the port with no wraparound services, no anything. If you told me, potentially moving Turning Points and other people into better locations, which frees up space around Lee Com Park to, to create the streetscapes they were talking about. If you told me, for this one single purchase, the chain reaction of opportunity for, for the benefit of this community, for the homeless of this community, for the staff in this community, for everyone's benefit, I would've, I would've never believed you. When this opportunity presented itself, I was blown away, and I understand the issue with commutes and retention. But that's implying everyone who currently works in this building walks, lives walking distance from here. Nobody was walking. There's not even a place to live down here. We don't have residential in downtown Bradenton. Like, half of our staff lives out east now. I bump into them in Publix every day. I live out east. We have staff in Sarasota, staff in St. Pete, staff as far up as Lakeland. They take the interstate. This is one light off of the interstate. So for everyone who's going to be a little bit more burdened because they live out west and they have to drive further, there's gonna be a one-for-one person who's a little bit closer and a little bit easier in their life. There's no right answer to this. No matter where we put this building, some people are gonna be better, some people are gonna be worse. Nobody moved to downtown Bradenton because they're an employee of Manatee County. This is, in my mind, an amazing opportunity. It cannot be tabled and deferred because this is a contract. We have a time-of-the-essence contract, and it's now public knowledge that Manatee County is looking to potentially buy this property. And if we don't sign this contract to at least start the diligence process, which again, isn't closing until September, somebody else can walk in and offer $25,000 more, $100,000. This is being bought from a public REIT whose sole and absolute purpose in life for their shareholders is to maximize profit. Any purchase price higher than our purchase price is a purchase price they're going to accept over ours. They have no vested interest in Manatee County, or this government, or you, just profit. So if we do not sign this contract, we risk losing this opportunity and waiting another six years for another opportunity to come along, or using Lena Road and spending 40 to 50 million dollars of your money to build the exact same property. Thank you. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I will tell you that, in my opinion, that we, we've, this board has, has, and in the past, has, has made some bad deals. But I don't believe that this is a bad deal. I think this is a great deal. And, um, knowing that off the bat, because I'll be honest with you, I don't really feel good spending $100 million on a parking garage. I really don't. I, I don't think I'd vote in favor of that. But I will tell you that to relocate our county governed operations to this new facility, okay? It's a grounded commitment and the physical responsibility. The long-term strategic planning, the enhanced public service delivery, you know, and I evaluate. If anybody scrutinizes deals, I think I do it more than anybody on this board. Because I want to make sure that we get the best deal possible, right? And if the construction of a new parking garage is estimated over, you know, at $100 million, this is a no-brainer for me. A no-brainer. So... And we're already looking towards a future of growing out east, as Chairman Cruz stated. So, you know, now this opens up more opportunities for us as far as what are we gonna do with that piece of property now. Honestly, I'd like to see this 64 million in savings that we're not spending on this parking garage. And I hope I get the board's support on this, is to build more roads, okay? Y'all know how I feel about that. So I think that, um, we're saving tens of millions of dollars in near-term capital costs, but also protecting the future generations from having to shoulder the financial consequences of this deferred infrastructure investment. So this is a sound, physical, you know, decision that we, that we're making today. And I think that, that this is the path that, uh, we need to go as a county, so that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bearden. And I have no one else on the board. Uh, I am entertaining motions, so we can go to the next item. There is no motion up on the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll motion to approve the purchase.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sadek and a second by Commissioner Ron. Now the motion's up, but it's, uh, tell Mike. Oh, now, oh, Commissioner McCann stole, and Commissioner Power, man, there's a, there's a coup on the dais. All right, you cast your vote. Now, I don't, I don't even care who it was. All right, Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Aye.
I think that was a aye. And as they approve, 7-2-0.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, the clerk,
You may.
The clerk is asking if you could just recite that it includes all the motions that were adopted, since there were four separate things being approved.
Were they being, does it require four separate motions, though?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Just reference, just reference that it includes all the, the recommended action.
I didn't make the motion. Commissioner McCann, I guess, is on the record.
Adaptation of budget amendment. Here we go. Adaptation of budget amendment, Resolutions B-25067 and B-25073, execution of contract for sale and purchase from CMHC 9,000 JV LLC for property at 9,000 Town Center Parkway, Lakewood Ranch, Florida 34202. And yes, that is my zip code. And Resolution R-25068, District 5.
All right. Is that good?
That's, I think the clerk is satisfied.
Okay. Well, it's approved 7-0. Do we need another break? Okay. We, we have to, we, we have clerks that need, that need breaks there. So we're supposed to do it every 90 minutes. We would, I would try to get through one. All right. Yeah, okay. It's, it's 7:38, I'm sorry, geez, 4:38? We'll take a break till 4:50, and we'll come back. All right. Getting back at it. Um, I, one, two, three, hold on. I have questions, just because I'm trying to, to make sure I'm managing expectations of people in this room and moving things along. There are two items, items fifty and fifty-one. One is for the Gold Star Families Memorial Highway. It's just an adoption of a resolution. We will be doing a full presentation on that here in the chambers in a couple of weeks. And the other is the resolution for the school board site near Artisan Lakes. Both of them are listed as presentation upon request. Is any, are any commissioners going to request presentations on those?
No.
For fifty or fifty-one? If no one's going to request presentations, then we can open fifty and fifty-one, open public comment, and just vote on them to allow those people to go about their lives now that it's already five o'clock at night. I should have done this three hours ago. Okay, so let's open item fifty, adoption of resolution.
Check with Bearden.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Bearden, are you going to request a presentation on either of these?
No, I'm not.
All right, excellent. So item fifty, adoption of resolution R-25-067, designate a portion of Buckeye Road and Parish from US 41 to Interstate 75 as Gold Star Families Memorial Highway. There's nobody on the board. I'll open this up to public comment. Caller eight-eight-six, your hand is up. Is that from the previous item, or is that about this resolution? I will assume it was previous. Oh. Eight-eight-six, is this the, is this a comment about the Gold Star Families Memorial Highway? Okay, I will close public comment. And I hear heavy motion by Commissioner Felts, second by Commissioner Ballard. You can cast your vote now. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Yay.
All right. And that is approved six-two-zero with Commissioner Ron absent. Item number fifty-one, resolution R-25-055, Artisan Lakes Elementary School Site Plan Approval. I have no one on the board. I will open this up to public comments. This is quasi-judicial, so I will not be taking phone call public comment. Has there been any ex parte communication on the Artisan Lakes Elementary School Site Plan?
No.
There has been none. No public comment. I will close public comment. No one's on the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Ballard. No longer have a motion by Commissioner Ballard, now a motion by Commissioner Felts. Nope, no motion by Commissioner Felts.
Oh, my gosh. I did the same thing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Felts, second by Commissioner McCann. You cast your votes now. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Yay.
And that is approved six-two-zero with Commissioner Ron absent. I apologize for that delay. I should have done that earlier. Sorry, Patty. Okay, now we are jumping ahead again. The next one. No, I know, it's over all the short-term, the short-term vacation rental thing should be faster. That's technically the next one. And I got all the fire chiefs here. Okay, short-term vacation rentals, I think this should be pretty quick presentation, right? It was only a couple of sides? Thirty-four sides? Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I didn't realize this is such a long presentation. What? All right, well, I'm sorry. I promised Commissioner McCann his roundabout was going to be next. I didn't, I thought that was going to be faster. I apologize. I know I have different people in there. We are opening sixty-one, motion to rescind contract for roundabout on Legacy and Deer Drive. I promise that will be the next one up. This is your item, Commissioner McCann, so I'll let you present it.
I'm sure there's been a lot of public comment on this. They, they said that there was a roundabout that they wanted to build on Legacy and University Parkway, and, you know, we just don't think it's a feasible thing there. We don't need that kind of traffic going through there. So all the people there, the Grass Crude Committee and everybody that's involved, you know, contacted me and asked me, can we rescind this contract? There has not been any shovels in the ground. You know, there has been some planning that was done. This roundabout, you know, again, we put a no U-turn sign up there, and, you know, we're, we're working for traffic safety now, and they feel that this would not be safe. You know, I know a lot of people call this traffic comic, you know, calming. We call it traffic panicking over there in Lakewood Ranch. So, you know, we would like to, you know, make a motion to actually stop this. And we have, you know, I'm sure, you know, you've got many comments in the emails, and, you know, we have a bunch of people here to speak right now. So, I mean, the thing is that, you know, I'm going to actually go ahead and make a motion here. And the motion, you know, what I'm going to do again is I talked to the county attorney on this, so I'd like her to make the motion.
November twelfth, twenty twenty-four reimbursement agreement between the county regarding the University Park at Legacy Boulevard Roundabout, and to bring back to the board a form of written contract mutually agreeing to terminate a foregoing agreement for consideration, review, and approval by the board.
All moved.
Commissioner McCann was making the motion. She was just reading it for him. I do have, I do have a motion on here. Were you done with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the board. Yes, Commissioner Ballard, second. Here's where I stand on this. I can appreciate the four to five thousand emails that inexplicably hit my inbox before this was even on the agenda. I mean, I mean, the pure guess that this was going to be on the agenda when all those emails hit, because it wasn't public that it was on the agenda, was impressive. Here's my issue, and I'm sure Commissioner Felts is a hundred percent going to agree with me, so you're going to have a hard time with her vote. We talk about transparency a lot. I'm staring out in a crowd. I do not see the other side of a contract that we're trying to terminate a contract with that party, to even come up and give their side of the discussion. This is a, this is a, this is a legal contract. A legal contract that, my understanding, doesn't allow us to terminate without cause. And cause is not necessarily because we don't want it anymore. They haven't defaulted on timelines, they haven't defaulted. I honestly, this isn't a hill I want to die on. I don't care if it's a lighter roundabout. I've said it a million times, I love roundabouts. I will say it on the record right now, if I could take every street light out of Monty County and turn them all into roundabouts, I would. But, but I would otherwise respect the district commissioners' wishes on this. I understand your position on it. What I have a hard time with is the way this was done, because this did not hit the agenda until five forty-five last night. Five forty-five, the night before. We're up here talking about transparency and that people didn't have an opportunity to read through a contract that was on the agenda for a week and a half, and people were having a heart, you know, a heartache on it. This came up late last night. The other side of the contract was not even alerted to the fact that this agenda item was coming up, and we would be discussing a contract that they duly signed with their attorney in good faith with the county. This was discussed by a previous board. Admittedly, not everyone on this board was there at the time. It was voted on by a board, signed by a board, with a legally binding contract based upon contract law of the United States, and somebody in good faith started spending real money designing. There's no shovel in the ground, but there's design work, and there's planning, and there's staffing and manpower expended planning for this, because they had a timeline they had to meet to avoid the cause issue. And now we're trying to terminate a contract without even the due process of the other party having an opportunity to stand here and speak on their behalf. So they're not here. If I do a public record request of emails sent to representatives of SMR from anyone's email up here to verify whether or not they were alerted to the fact, to be able to speak their opinion on it, to explain it, explain why they felt this was important, that's a different story. So I think that, at the very least, this should be on the next agenda, because I haven't had a chance to talk to Public Works. There's a reason we proposed this. And I'll use as an example another part of Country Club. When we were talking about the, the roundabout, the roundabout versus streetlight wars of East Country Club versus West Country Club. Oh, my word, that was months. But we were afforded the opportunity here, both sides of it, not just the one side of the group that was being alerted to, hey, tell everyone you don't like something, and not alerting the other side. I went out and sat at a pool and talked to all the roundabout people. It was like the, what are they, snitches or whatever? Some people had stars on their bellies, and some people didn't. It was fifty-fifty mix. I was up, I was up at a Starbucks meeting with the, the streetlight people, or was that my pool meeting with the roundabout people? And we were getting petitions, and we were meeting with Chad and his team, and they were telling us the pros and cons of both options, both in terms of cost and safety. So we had whole presentations. and they were telling us the pros and cons of both options, both in terms of cost and safety. So we had whole presentations. We didn't have that for this. This was just an agreement to do the roundabout that was signed, and now we're just gonna blindly say, now we don't want a roundabout. There's no reason for not wanting a roundabout, other than we don't like roundabouts now. So we just don't want it. There's no, like, statistically speaking, this is why this has to go, or from a cost standpoint, this doesn't make sense. It's just, eh, we don't like it. And again, I don't care. I do not care which one is on this thing, but I do care about the fact that we're trying to pull a contract that was duly executed and rescind things just based upon feelings of not wanting them anymore when we're over here talking about transparency, and I don't have the other side to speak to it. I have not had the opportunity to be briefed on is there a real issue with this? Because I know there was Sarasota DRI issues with this, there was concurrency issues with this. We're up here talking about infrastructure and concurrency and LOS. We haven't had this conversation. This would have been a better presentation instead of putting it on at 5:45 at night, the night before a meeting, to put it on the May 20th agenda, which would have given everybody more than sufficient time to get comfortable with it. And once I could get comfortable with all the facts, then I would probably be on your side. My vote here is not a yes or no in terms of roundabout or streetlight. It's a yes or no relative to, I don't think this is the right process to rescind the contract in the cover of darkness the night before. Commissioner Felce.
Well, I totally understand what you're saying on this. But you know what? Sometimes there's the power of the people. How many times are we the ones that don't know what's going on when we don't find out until it's too late? And these people took an interest, saw what was going on. They appealed to their county commissioner. They made a great effort in the letter writing. It's, I agree, there's a timing, and I agree that it's not fair. And maybe there's no other reasons, but I've read a lot of emails. And I'm sure we're gonna have public comment where you're going to take the time to also let us know these things. It would be, I'm really torn, because I do understand what Commissioner Cruz is saying, and that this is not... We didn't, we could put it as a motion for later on. But I think the people speak. And the applicant or the other party is free to look at our citizens' comments that we publish with our agendas, to look at our agendas. If I was doing a lot of business with the county, I'd probably check that agenda every minute and the updates and everything and stay on top of stuff. So I always, and I hope that this follows through with the other commissioners, I believe that, you know, Dr. McCann knows his district and knows his people. And in that, the effort that was made, I understand both sides of it, but with the effort that was made, with the commissioner from that district being behind that, and with the responsibility of if there is another party, then they need to keep up on things, even if that means reading the agenda at 5:45 or just the way that we do for things that are popped on the agenda. And I'm pretty sure that if there was a different timing in this, and this was, let's say, around a certain time of the year where our status is contingent upon how the public comment is going at the time, you might think a little bit differently, but I've got to back up the commissioner for that district.
I appreciate your speech. I appreciate the great punctuation that you did on that. I will tell you that that roundabout was forced on them. Nobody asked them if they wanted a roundabout. That was SMR saying, we're gonna put a roundabout there, number one. Number two, you know, I keep hearing this law stuff and all that. I'm licensed to practice law. I understand contract law. I understand rescissions, okay? And it's state that matters here, not federal. I want to tell you right now that I have had many people from that area say, we are getting tired of things being forced down our throat. I even said at a meeting, you know, from up above, to tell, you know, he said, more money goes to the Lakewood Ranch area than goes to the west. And I said, hey, we've gotten, we're getting things forced down our throat that we don't want. I think you'll remember me saying that. And, you know, we would love to give you this money from the roundabout. On top of that, I talked to Chad on Thursday morning, and we actually had my briefing on Thursday morning. And the briefing was, we were talking about the fact that there were certain priorities. How this got to number two on a priority over Lorraine Road is ridiculous. I said, drop it off. These people don't want it anyway. So when these people contacted me again, I said, this is gonna be on the agenda, because we were putting it on Thursday morning, okay? Ed didn't find it on the agenda, because he thought that Chad was gonna be putting something on the agenda about this. So Ed, actually, we thought we were gonna have that presentation again today about, you know, what the priorities are. So Ed then put it on there. He called Bobby right away and said, we need to put this on there. And she said, it's on there. Don't worry about it. It will come out, you know, on the next, what do you call it? Update, yeah, agenda update. So, you know, as far as transparency goes, SMR didn't go to them and say, hey, you want a roundabout? And they certainly didn't come to me and say, you want a roundabout? And the last board that was here signed that contract on November 12th after we were already elected and should not have signed a contract or entered into a contract after we were already elected. There was no transparency during the last board. There was no transparency with them. And we need to think, what do you want in your neighborhood? And that will just create chaos over there. So that's why I said I would bring it up on May 6th and get it on to the agenda. And again, Bobby and, you know, Ed talked back and forth on Thursday, Friday, and they got it onto the agenda. So we're not trying to hide anything from anybody, okay? We are as transparent as we can be. And the thing is that, the other thing is this contract that was signed on the 12th should not have been signed. But the thing is, they wanted to get it in very fast before we got on the board. And the other thing is that there is no shovel in the ground at this time. The cost is minimal to stop it now. If we want to wait longer, hey, they'll just spend more money. So we want to rescind the contract, and they're gonna negotiate to make the contract a mutual release. So this is where we are right now. So we want to make this happen today.
All right. Quickly put myself back. Again, I don't honestly care either way on this one. But again, I care about the process. I do find it a little humorous, just because I need some levity in terms of this day, that everybody cares about transparency and timing until it's a project they support. And then all of a sudden, you can cram that thing through, and if you're gonna be on the wrong side of it, everyone needs a month of advance notice. But if you're gonna vote for it, they can call it the night before. It's okay. And it's very easy to get 100% of the emails supporting something if you only tell one side. Okay, okay, okay. I don't mean to be disrespectful. I'll open up public comment. I can't have people calling out from here. You're always on the board. The tell's after. All I'm asking, again, I started this thing. I said I didn't care either way. I said I was gonna vote with the district commissioner. I don't care. I'm going to support Commissioner McCann on this. All I'm saying is, for future effort, I did, I don't like the fact that the other party of this contract is not in this room and has not been afforded the opportunity to speak. I wish I would have had more opportunity, or any opportunity, to be briefed by our Public Works, because there's a reason we were putting a roundabout here, and it wasn't because we just like burning money for no reason. There's clearly a safety thing or a traffic thing that was gonna be beneficial. That's probably gonna have to result in something else being done at this intersection to create the efficiencies and the safety that this roundabout was otherwise going to be provided. Those things I did not have an opportunity for, and I do not like that situation. That said, I'm not going to vote no on this just to get that information, because I won't get that information, because this is gonna pass, and that's okay. I'll vote in favor of it. Hold on, I have people on the board, Chad. That's all I've been saying, is we need to be more cognizant of the rules that say we're supposed to have three business days to allow people the opportunity to do this, and not expect people to check agendas at 5:45 at night. Because if I would say the public should be checking at 5:45 at night, I would get skewered. I would get skewered for it. So it doesn't hold true that other people should be expected to check our agenda updates in the middle of the night when we don't expect the public to, nor should we. Commissioner Sadiq.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with your comments. I think the most important thing we can do is protect the institution and, of course, ensure that we have a fair and open process for residents, I think, just for the future. Because I don't really care about whether the roundabout's here or not. I'd, 10 times out of 10, go with the commissioner for that district. It's such a small issue. But I think the process should be respected. Discussion and likely staff would more than likely go along with not moving forward on the project anyways. Would just be to bring it up for discussion with the intention, and then say, hey, we'll vote on this in the next meeting. And likely, I get seven votes. But my, the real concern I do have is the legal risk to the county. And so, insofar as, because it's 5:45, I'm not reading that 5. There's like a million items to look at. But, plus the briefings that are required. But county attorney, what are the risks of us just terminating this today? Can we be sued? Just curious.
Well, the motion isn't to terminate today. The motion is to enter into mutually agreeable termination agreement, to terminate the document. So that's our recommendation.
Okay.
Not to terminate unilaterally today, but to negotiate a mutually agreeable termination, assuming the other side is open to that and willing. We'll bring that back.
What happens if they're not?
We'll report that back to the board.
Okay.
Or I should say county administration will. This is, you know, county administration will engage in the negotiations, because I assume Public Works will have to be involved in that process. I see Mr. Butso nodding his head. You know, they'll try to negotiate the best mutually terminate, mutual termination of the contract that they can and bring that back before the board. If they're unsuccessful, then they'll report that back to the board.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm all right with moving forward on this, then. Thank you.
Commissioner Ballard.
So this is definitely one of those situations where it does not impact my district. I received the emails. It was very clear to me how the people who are impacted most by this feel about it, which is why I seconded Commissioner McCann's motion. I, you know, whenever possible, and especially when it is a truly hyper-local issue like that, I want to respect the district commissioner. And so I will be voting for the motion to rescind the contract. And hopefully, they can reach a mutually beneficial agreement to terminate.
All right, I think we have pretty much unanimous decision. So Commissioner Felce, do you have anything new to add before I open up public comment?
Yes. I think that I want us to keep in mind, as we go into the meeting on Thursday, which is land use, what is fair and fair notice and fair public opportunity to understand what's going on. If we are really concerned about being fair and everyone having proper notice of things, I want us to keep that in mind when we come up to some discussion on things on this Thursday about transparency and fair public notice, because we're gonna be talking about that. And this is, you know, we all talked about being grassroots candidates and talking about the grassroots people out there and listening to the people. This was a project that you guys kept your eyes on the ball. You guys didn't want it to begin with. As Commissioner McCann said, it was a contract that was signed on November 12th. Maybe we're gonna look at some other things that came out of our last administration that we aren't really keen on right now. And I'm sorry that it doesn't seem like we're being fair to the contractor that thinks he has a contract to build a roundabout. But, you know, the people pretty much have spoken, and you've made it known to your county commissioner. And congratulations, because that's the way it's supposed to be done. 77,000 bosses that I have in District One, not these other people up here. He's got 77,000, 80,000 bosses in his neighborhood, not the people up here, and not our staff. And when you guys speak, we're supposed to listen, no matter how we feel personally about roundabouts and that kind of thing. So you cannot ever err on the side of representing your constituents. You will never err, legally, fairness, or otherwise. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bearden does not have his hand up. All right. Yes, Chad.
Just as the part that was known, we agree with the concept of the intent is to change or to do, go away from a roundabout. The effect at this intersection because of need is, it will need improvements. Something that we had proposed, we have our meeting scheduled with the developer that was gonna build this tomorrow. We offer the opportunity to potentially, say, negotiate a change in the scope of the agreement to the upgraded signal. The development needs will still cause turn lane improvements and the movement of at least one of the mastarms, because we had this in the very early stages of when we looked at this the first time. It's, the county will still be a big participant within the intersection improvement as a whole, because we do have turn lane improvements we need to do if it's gonna go back to a signal to get into Legacy. So that was where I was just saying, potentially, if the decision's been made to change the scope, could the direction be negotiating an amendment to the agreement to construct the approved signal?
Okay. Well, I'm assuming you'll be involved in that, so we can move this on. All right, I'm going to open this up for public comment. I'll just remind everyone that it sounds like you have a pretty favorable vote here, so you can only talk your way out of it. Go ahead.
Won't try to do that. Carol Cooper, Lakewood Ranch, Manatee County. Thank you. I was gonna say good afternoon, but good evening and happy hour. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to share some information, because the other side wasn't present. But I have an email from Ann Ross, the executive for, works for Rex Jensen. And she specifically said, this was Manatee County, not them. I'll just read it to you if you want a copy of the email. Actually, Dr. Bob was copied on this email as well. It says, with the need, there's a need for improvements at that intersection. We already have a turn sig- multi-directional turn signals at that lane. This is not a situation like Lorraine and Players where there was nothing. We already have signals there. They need improvement in timing. They need improvement in enhancements for lane lengthening to be able to turn. But we have signals. So there is some work that needs to be done. And when Lakewood Ranch stewardship approached Manatee County about doing work on this intersection, they said that Lakewood Ranch needed to do it for their corporate park, most of which is on the Sarasota County portion, not on Manatee County. And Manatee County's reply back to them was that the county also needs to do things. So they've identified additional improvements needed, and they would work with them on it. So they then said, so it's up to the county to change the design plan. So it is your decision, even according to the people who brought it to you. So don't feel so guilty about the fact that they're not here. They said it's up to you to make the design change. It's not a safe environment the way it is now. We know that. Roundabouts are not a bad thing. Roundabouts work at the right locations. This is not one of them. We have a entrance, gated entrance to a private. For those of you who don't live in Lakewood Ranch or get out there very often, it's a big country club with 45 communities, over 4,000 residents. There's a heritage golf group just took over and has expanded their golf course membership. So you've got members that are not residents who are also using that. You have a school, grades five through 12 on the opposite side. You have a church on the far corner with a preschool. This is not an environment that you want to put in a roundabout, and I'm glad we have the support of the commissioners. Thank you all very much.
Okay, I'm gonna be contrary. I don't think this motion should be allowed. I prefer to put a motion together based on what this gentleman's saying, that the contract... to put a motion together based on what this gentleman's saying, that the, that the contract that's in place be renegotiated with the contractor to see what the options. There was a reason they wanted to put a roundabout in. It wasn't just commercial. It's also because of the backup on university going into legacy that we get, which puts us right out in the middle of the traffic coming up behind us. And every time I get into that lane, I get worried about being rear-ended by somebody speeding down that road. It needs to be improved. It needs to be changed. No argument with that. But the motion to cancel the contract is the wrong one. Because as soon as you do that, you screw him over as well, because he's no longer in a position to be able to renegotiate the contract in fair faith with a contractor that's got a signed contract from the county. And I think that needs to be addressed before we take away his ammunition to be able to renegotiate the contract and the scope of work. And I think the amendment, and I think the, if you're going to get rid of it, the roundabout, then let's make sure we have what we need in, set, agreed and set aside in a contract that we, that he will agree with, with the contractor. And we know that we're going to get a safer junction than one we've got right now. Because right now, it's a serious accident waiting to happen. And I, I rest my case. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I apologize for being so slow. My name's Tom Nierm. I'm a resident in Lakewood Ranch in Weston. I should like to say I have sent one of the emails that went to, to you folks. I apologize if I am repeating anything that's been said, but along with having difficulty walking, I don't hear very well. Country Club has five entrances and exits, two on Lorraine, two on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, and the main one is legacy going on to university. I think you're aware of that. Those of us who live in Lakewood Ranch, in Country Club, know how much traffic is traveling at times, going back and forth on university. So our traffic light stops traffic so we can get in and out, especially to get out. The roundabout is a great idea when traffic is very light, because you can merge with no trouble at all. But other times, university is very crowded and they're going to back up on my side in legacy. The one email you got mentioned different groups that use legacy. It failed to mention that we have an athletic club. We have tennis clubs. And of course, we have the country club. But all the traffic, I can get out of any of the five exits. I can get out of the four exits, or the three exits rather, that don't have any, anything to stop you. Because I've, I've got, I, on my automobile, a method that opens up the gate for me. But anybody visiting, anybody who doesn't have that must come out of either the one exit on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard or legacy. And most of them are going to come out legacy. And you're going to have a backup there. And the traffic trying to merge, it's 45 miles an hour on university, trying to merge is liable to cause danger. I'm not mentioning at all the pedestrian traffic, because I don't see much of it. But automobiles trying to come out are going to be backed up. But we won't have that problem with the, with the lights. We don't have it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
Hi, Mike Defferting, Manatee resident and Lakewood Ranch Country Club resident. I vote in business, you learn not to speak pass the sale. So I'm not going to speak long. But what I would share with you, given your mutual concern about transparency, is that I actually took the time to go to the county meeting that they held about the traffic light decision on the players' gate entrance. And so, and it was great. Your Public Works guys explained what they thought about this and that. And, and the community got a chance to come. And I kept asking when I heard this thing coming up, I says, when, when's the public session like we had in the county previously, when you all were contemplating what was the appropriate traffic feature to have there? And, and so today is the first day I've learned, it was already decided. And I've lived there for seven years. And so if there had been a public meeting, we would have had transparency. And I, and I would share with you my background. Before I retired, and I would tell you that I have friends who live at Lakewood Ranch. And they said, we don't move here by accident. We move here because of the quality of life. It is a great place to live. And so, so I've been a real estate developer. And so did over $2 billion of development in a six-year period. So, so you look at traffic, you look at how people actually move from place to place. The, the traffic intersection does need improvement, no doubt about it. It is a harrowing experience when the turn lane isn't long enough for you to get out of the flow of the traffic. Because as Norman said, you're, you're concerned you're going to get rear-ended. So, so it's not that there's nothing to be done here, but the traffic circle is not the least cost solution for fixing that intersection. You have the opportunity to do something better. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr., are you coming up to speak?
Yes.
All right.
My name is Matt Canjemi. I'm from the Country Club as well, Manatee County. And again, like has been said here, I'm just going to repeat what they said. Extending that turn lane, like they did on Edgewater and they do in other places, extending that turn lane would alleviate all the backup on University Parkway, I believe. You got bus traffic coming from the school down on Deer Run. You got all buses, four o'clock that thing is, three o'clock that thing is filled with school buses. You got tractor trailers going back and forth many times. You got children that cross that intersection from the school. You got runners and bikers that use that intersection. I'm legally blind. That intersection, a roundabout is no good in that location. A light is much better for the traffic that's at that particular intersection. You're not talking about out in the middle of nowhere. You're talking about the main intersection with main exits and entrances on all sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Canjemi, C-A-N-G-E-M-I.
So you know an answer for public comment and nobody's on the phone. I will close public comment. There are no board members on the board. I still have a motion on the board by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. And everyone other than Commissioner Bearden had already voted about 30 minutes ago. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Yay.
All right. And that is approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner on absence. Thank you all for coming. Let's, let's, if, if, there's no pizza. We're plowing through. All right. Number 57, short-term vacation rentals. Let's try to get this done so Commissioner Sadiq can go get yelled at in another setting.
Yeah, for everything you guys do.
Is there pizza?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Rob Wenzel, Division Manager with Development Services. And I'll be doing the presentation today along with Rodney Kowalski, who's the West Manatee Fire Marshal, and Tom Wooton, who's our Code Enforcement Chief. Just, just to point out, Rodney goes all over the state of Florida and he knows vacation rentals and what the fire code requirements are for the state of Florida better than anyone. So people ask him all the time to help them out. So I thought it'd be great to have Rodney here to give some of his expertise to us. And to have Tom here too, just because we wasn't sure what questions might come up, as well as Matt Rush, our new building official, is here also in case we have any building code questions. And I did want to thank Gavin Campbell for helping with this too, because he was instrumental in getting everyone together and helping with the powerpoint. So I want to give him a shout out. I'll try to keep this brief in the, you know, because I know time and it's getting late. So today, we're going to be talking about the short-term rentals. And this is based on a January 28th motion by the board for us to come back and discuss the short-term rentals with you and draft an ordinance. I will say that we have drafted an ordinance. It's not finalized. We wanted to get direction from the board first today before we finish our ordinance. So we did start the draft. We have the draft. And if anyone wants to see it, I can give it to you after the meeting or tomorrow or whatever. We just wanted to get some direction first. And I will start my slideshow now. So as far as the Florida statutes go, I just, I did want to point this out. Based on 509.242-1C, vacation rental is any unit or group of units in a condominium or cooperative or any individually or collectively owned single family, two, two-family, three-family, or four-family house or dwelling unit that is also a transient public lodging establishment, but that is not a timeshare project. I did want to point out that the word transient in here, in the definitions under Florida Statute 509.013, that's for something under, other, under 30 days. And up below, you'll see 509.032, per N7 per MB. Did want to read this to a local law, ordinance or regulation may not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate their duration, the duration or frequency of the rental of vacation rentals. The paragraph does not apply to any local law ordinance or regulation adopted on or before June 1st, 2011. I did want to point out that although this restricts us from regulating the vacation rentals, like the, the length, the duration, that we can have an ordinance where we can look at certain requirements, safety, certain things. And I'll get to that in my presentation here. So moving on to the next page. Policy options within Florida law. We can, we can require, we can have an ordinance where we can ask for folks to permit or do a registration through Manatee County. We can look at fee structure, safety inspections, code enforcement, some of the things we'd look at, quiet hours, occupancy limits, trash, and parking rules. We've researched many different municipalities close by, five or six of them, and some even have a specific hotland or complaint system. So state requirements. So the first step for if you want to do a vacation rental through the state is that you need to go to DBPR, the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. The application fee for that is $50 and license fee for single family is $170. And that gets renewed annually. I did want to point out also the numbers for Manatee County. And this is a plus or minus number, because we've seen different numbers and we're not really sure, because we don't, we don't really have a, you know, registration here in Manatee County right now, other than the tax collector and the fire districts.
I don't want to interrupt, but there's 5,800 in Manatee County?
Fifty-eight, 5,800.
All right.
Or, or more. We're seeing more than that actually. So, but I'll just, I'll go off my script here a little bit and say there are companies that the tax collector, as well as Man, West Manatee Fire District use, like Granicus or Avenue, that track and they look at websites and they see who's doing these vacation rentals and putting out on websites. That's kind of how they capture it. And then they go back and they make them register them, the ones that we haven't found. So there are some that might be out there that haven't been registered.
And just for clarification, when you say 500, like, say hypothetically, someone buys a bunch of houses out on Homewood Beach, knocks them down, and builds an eight-bedroom, eight-bath house. Does that count? And they rent each bedroom out individually on a app. Does that count as eight or does that count as one?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
To be honest.
Okay, fair enough.
One?
That counts as one?
Rodney and Stephanie are saying one, and I'll go with that.
Even though they're being rented out as eight separate rentals? Okay.
They can be boarding and lodging.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, the size and scope of the question.
And I, I did want to put in some other ones too, like the city of Sarasota, the city of Bradenton with the, and these are all plus or minus, the 814 and the 3,062. But you can see Miami-Dade and Osceola County really have a lot. But I think if we go with the registration system, we're going to see that we have a lot more than we think we have. General concerns for these short-term rentals, vacation rentals, mostly improper parking, excessive noise, excessive garbage, over occupancy. You can see the people on the roof there in our picture that Gavin did. And, you know, safety measures for fire and building. So like I said, the, like, that wasn't, that wasn't in Manatee County, I don't think.
That's, that was our guess. We assumed it was some sort of teen movie from the 90s.
Yeah, I don't know where he got the picture and I apologize. The next slide, we did meet with the tax collector's office and saw how they did it. And I did want to clear up the first sentence on the 13% tourist development tax. That's actually 6%. And then the additional 7% is your sales tax. So that's what's collected on these is 6% goes to the tax collector and 7% to the Department of Revenue. Again, they use, utilize Avenue to compile the list of advertised short-term rentals. That's the company that they go to to make sure that they're capturing everybody that's advertising for them. 96% of their registrations are online. City of Bradenton requires that they show proof that they went to the tax collector's office. And we're just kind of giving examples of what other people do, because we're trying to put this ordinance together. And we just need a little bit of direction from the board on how stringent we want to be on this. And if you catch somebody that, that hasn't complied, they go back three years and do the tax retro back three years just to come into compliance. So we did look at these other municipalities and you can see least restrictive to most restrictive. We did look at all of their ordinances. I did not put all the ordinances in my slideshow. We have copies if anybody wants the ordinances for those municipalities. But that's what we came up with for the most restrictive, or the least restrictive to the most restrictive. Next slide is, kind of broke down the different, the five different municipalities and kind of showed initial registration fees, renewal fees, parking, maximum occupancy, quiet hours, violation penalties and inspections. Everything that we looked at is a little bit different. Some of them make you do a sketch with each thing, that you show the interior of the structure and a sketch for the exterior of the structure where you have to show where you're going to, where these folks are going to park. Some limit the, the number of people, the occupants. There's all kinds of different things in here. So, you know, I wanted to give examples of how different things are and the fees. So we also wanted to research and see how much does it cost the municipalities to track these and have these people register? And you can see there, most of them are using a vendor. And they've got full-time employees. So for the city of Sarasota, they have five full-time employees. That's a supervisor and admin assistant, vacation rental compliance specialist. They have two of those. City of Bradenton, they have three FTEs. Collier County, they actually do it in-house, because if you saw on the previous slide, they don't have a lot of requirements. Once you register, they, they know that you're registered and they don't have a lot of, you know, requirements and things that you have to do along the way. Pinellas County, this is what they gave us as far as their budget for this. We met with Pinellas County and that's what they told us their budget is. And they have four FTEs. So just wanted to point out those things to you. So implementation factors, staffing resources, depending on the scope, how far we want to go with this, if we do, if the board does decide to do this. Registration software, do we want, or does the board want another company to do the registration? Or should we, we have the Acela system that we started in 2018 that can handle Or should, we, we have the Acela system that we started in 2018 that can handle the registration of these. We've heard that from Pinellas County. They have Acela. So we could do that. And we could go, or if the Board wanted to, we could hire a Granicus or a Avenue to look at websites, to see who's, who has vacation rentals that aren't registering. So that's really what I have. I did, I guess at the end of the day, we just, I see a lot of redundancy. If you look at what the tax collector has, they have a registration. West Manatee has a registration. All the, you know, city of Bradenton, everybody has a registration and doing the same thing. It would be nice if we weren't so redundant, and, you know, everybody has to hire a company like Granicus or Avenue. It just seems like a lot of expense for, you know, Manatee County as a whole. So that's what, that's one thing that I would point out, that it seems like there's a lot of redundant fees that are being spent. And I know Rodney's going to get up here and speak at how much they spend with Granicus and to do this. It's, it's a lot of money. So it would be nice if we could, like, pool our, what we need and do it together as Manatee County. So with that, I will turn it over to West Manatee Fire and Rodney. Oh, were there any questions for me before I?
I do have two Commissioners on the Board. Not sure if there are questions for you, per se. Commissioner Sadiq?
Sure. In Collier County, I'm curious, what other municipalities have you seen? Because they're, they're three times our size by landmass, but population smaller. I'm curious, in other counties you've seen, have you, have you also seen similar levels of that, that distribution of enforcement? Meaning a fire dis, well, we're rare in that we have fire districts, but the tax collector or, you know, cities doing their own thing. I'm just curious, where else have you seen that?
The only ones that we looked at were the five that we have. And it looks like, like I said, Collier was the, the one that was the least restrictive and that you, I mean, the other ones all have certain things. And I think all of them go through their tax collector. I think that's what we found, and, you know, Gavin could step up, too, and correct me if I'm wrong. But I think the next, the step is DBPR, and then you go to your tax, your local tax collector. And then you'd go to your, you know, local county or municipality. I don't know if that answered your question.
That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes. So I actually, one of the things that you were talking about was the duplication of services. And so I, I did find out this year that the property appraiser, or, I'm sorry, the tax collector is already doing this with Avenue. It makes no sense to me that we would duplicate that service. Like, can't we just use their records and then go to enforcement? And my other question was, do you know if Sarasota County has an ordinance?
I don't believe they do. I think they're working on it right now. I take that back. I think they have an old one, and I think they're redoing it right now. I'm not positive on that.
Okay.
Gavin, do you know? No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rodney Kwitkowski. I'm the Fire Marshal of West Manatee Fire Rescue District. I appreciate very much, the District does, that you've invited us to be part of this life safety issue discussion. At West Manatee Fire Rescue, let me start by saying the fire districts in the state of Florida are required by state statute. 633 is the Florida state statute that gives local AHJs, authorities of any jurisdiction, fire districts, the authority to do fire and life safety inspections, whether that comes from the Florida Fire Prevention Code, 633-208, or 633-206 is the Uniform Fire Safety Standards. Okay? Under 633-206, we get our 69A codes. 69A is, he's come from the Florida State Fire Marshal's Office. 69A-43 is for transient public lodging establishments. In West Manatee's district, we have 4,633 short-term rental vacation rentals, transient public lodging establishments. The vast majority of those, well, 4,633, are single-family, two-family, or multifamily units. There are exclusions through DBPR. To answer your question earlier, Chairman, regarding single rooms, people can rent out up to three rooms to people that's not related to them under DBPR standard and under the Florida Fire Prevention Code. They go beyond that, then they fall into maybe a rooming and lodging occupancy or something like that. What we do at the District of West Manatee, we work closely with all the municipalities, the city of Anna Maria, Holmes Beach, and Braden Beach. And primarily what we're looking for under 69A-43, we've got a condensed list here that we share with all of our customers. We're looking for an address. We're looking for, that it's visible, easily visible, that they have working and registered smoke alarms and fire extinguishers, that they're located in the proper location. We check, we check some electrical, primary, that you have egress and that you have a secondary means of escape. It's pretty simple, honestly. We get these inspections done relatively quickly. So 69A-43, like I said, applies mostly to one- and two-family. We have people in our district that'll rent you a boat for the night, right? Out in, in the, in the inner coastal. They'll even take you out there and drop you off. Sometimes good luck getting back to shore. But again, the vast majority, single-family homes, 4,633 in West Manatee's district alone, it's important. You know, the prescriptive code is very brief. It's like three pages of, you know, smoke alarms, do they work? Again, you've got an extinguisher, it's certified, it's in the proper location. Secondary means of escape, a lot of times people will, someone had mentioned earlier, the floor plan diagram, that is, comes from DBPR as well as the Florida Fire Prevention Code. In part, some of that is to discourage people from converting what should not be a bedroom into a bedroom, because we've, we've found that quite a bit. People try to get as many people into a residence as they can. There is an occupancy load at the 69A-43, and that's one person per 150 square feet. So if you had a 2,000-square-foot home, technically, you could have 14 people visit. Most municipalities have something more stringent, such as two per bedroom and then plus two. So three-bedroom, you could have six plus two, you could have eight. What we cannot do is make, make a, someone sprinkler based on their rental status. There's an exception, an exemption to that requirement in 633. So our customers don't have to worry about that, that type of a fee. Emergency lighting is a requirement in TPLAs, but there's cost-efficient ways to meet that minimum standard. We talked about extinguishers. There's your diagram. We provide additional information. For example, we've had a rash of drownings in 2022. 100% of our drownings are pediatric drownings in swimming pools or at vacation rentals. 73% of our structure fires on the island over this three-year period were at vacation rentals. Most jurisdictions don't know what their numbers are because they're not tracking. And so, but that's changing. There's been a rash of high-profile fires at vacation rentals around the country. And so a lot of people have died, and a lot of people are being held accountable now, more and more. This, so, so one of the things we do is, again, we work closely with, this is a picture myself and Maria Rigoli from AMI Vacation Rentals. She manages, she's the chief compliance officer there. She manages over 700 properties in our district alone. Last year, every one of those were inspected and compliant. And again, this year, though, all 700 of those will be compliant. So you can be safe and, and compliant. Those things aren't mutually exclusive and profitable for these businesses. And I am open to any questions you might have. Happy to answer them. Please.
Code enforcement.
Good evening. Tom Wooton, Code Enforcement Chief. Just going to talk about a few things that might go hand-in-hand with some of the short-term rentals and how we handle the violations that we come across today. Trash and debris complaints, the complaints filed, reported by resident staff or anonymously, submitted via phone, email, or 311 system. The initial inspection, the officer will go out and inspect the property, take photos, document anything they can find. They have the option to issue a notice of violation or what we call a courtesy notice. We give them typically seven days on the initial violation to comply. Upon reinspection, if the property's still in violation, the officer has the option to issue a notice to appear before a court judge, or can request the case to go to a special magistrate. If the violator's making progress, a lot of times, we won't do either one, and we'll just continue to work with the violator until they come into compliance. If we can't find an owner, or we have an owner that's just not willing to comply, we also have the option to do a lot clearing, where we have a county vendor go out and clear the property. Once that is done, we give them 30 days to pay, then we file a lien and put on the tax collector role. If we get a property that fails to comply, property owner won't comply, will not work with us. Once we've issued the notice to appear and the case has gone to special magistrate, then we can ask the county attorney to get involved to file an injunction. The noise disturbance, we only conduct noise readings during between typically 7:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Anything after that is done by the Sheriff's Office. As you see, it's unlawful to cause or allow any noise disturbance for Section 2-21-34, determining factors such as sound level and intensity, the time, duration, and zoning of source, receiver, ambient noise, and proximity to residences, and whether the sound is usual or unusual. The affected parties are usually residents, passerby, code and/or law enforcement. The prohibited acts, measurements, and adjustments, it's plus five DBA for short, non-repetitive sounds, negative five DBA for continuous sounds. Measurements follow ASTM and ANSI standards, and typically taken approximately five feet above ground, depending on the property type. Here's a chart basically showing you the different time periods for residential and commercial properties, what the DBAs are allowed. 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, 60 to 65 at residential, and 72 to 77 at commercial, and then so on for Friday, Saturday holidays, Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 p. to 7:00 a. And then Friday, Saturday holidays from 12:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The enforcement progression is on the first violation, they use an option to issue $100 fine or notice to appear in county court. Second violation, within 365 days, is also a, can be a $250 fine or notice to appear in court. And then a third violation within 365 days can be a $500 fine or notice to appear in county court as well, with potentially an arrest by law enforcement. The way we track these, some of the things that we have outside of the normal codes, for example, our sexually orientated businesses, is for an issue on a license, what they do is they, temporary license is issued within 24 hours of application. The final decision, they either get a license or deny within 20 days of application. And the license denial conditions can be an applicant under 18, missing or false information on application, unpaid application fee, noncompliance with zoning or configuration requirements, previous business interest declared a nuisance or subject to closure, and criminal convictions related to a specified activity. The temporary license is issued immediately, expires upon final decision, the license or intent to deny within 20 days, and then again, more denial conditions. This is all tracked through our Acela system. So we have an officer that handles these things, and they go out and do random inspections and follow up with the licensing and the collection of the fees, which for the process through Acela will form random inspections to ensure compliance and verify that the annual license fee of $572 for the business and employee license of $260 is current. And again, that's all tracked through Acela. And do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you. Turn it back over to Rob.
Thank you, Tom. All right, I do have Commissioner Sadiq on the Board.
Thank you all. I'd like to thank our staff, Code Enforcement, Development Services. It's been a long day trying to make sure I get everybody. Development Services, but also West Manatee Fire District for, and City of Holmes Beach, Anna Maria, Bradenton, for really working with me and doing the research and giving me some information firsthand, some of your experiences. Sat through a very technical meeting, and I saw those manuals, Rodney, so I should refer back to those. I learned a lot about fire codes, so I appreciate it. It was interesting, Rob, my, my observation in all this is similar to yours. I think we have, why I really wanted to see this after we brought this up as a strategic priority for the year, is that we have a very fractured system, and it really stems from Tallahassee wanting to see a consistent approach. But the reality is, like most preemptions, if not all, tends to backfire pretty quickly. And so what we've seen is, because of a lack of local control, or at least a local framework, for, for lack of a better word, we have tax collectors doing one thing, West Manatee Fire is doing another, Cedar Hammock, North River, everyone's doing something different. And cities have kind of, you've seen it with the cities play out, they've taken things in their own control. So why do we also have the fracture? I think that Sarasota County, there are typically two ways that I've seen counties approach this. One is through land development code, one is through ordinance. I think the ordinance approach is the better approach because it's all from one pane of glass as opposed to deciphering code. Sarasota County does this, and so does Hillsborough County, they establish zones, similar to City of Holmes Beach, I believe, where you then have additional requirements, restrictions, that type of thing for what you can approve. I don't think that's a great idea for the county, just because it's, it's a lot, and we have a higher volume, way more than 5,800. I sat through with Granicus, we have a lot more homes in the county. So I think an ordinance is really the best approach. As far as what I'd like to see out of it, I've been, I like to commend the private partners like Airbnb reaching out and having that conversation as well, because I want to make sure there's a transparent approach that does involve the, the industry. Some of the sticking points have been certainly cost. A lot of that does come down to how frequently we do inspections. And I would also say who does inspections as well. So some thoughts from me. Some municipalities, because they're in coastal hazard areas or barrier islands, they do inspections yearly. I get it. I think for us as a county, a baseline is, that's fair, is probably three years at, at minimum, with one exception for coastal hazard areas. Well, we do substantial damage estimates. I do believe we should at least do a follow-up safety inspection to make sure there's not unpermitted work that has happened, but also that the house is safe for tourists. And that's really my biggest concern, even locals, too, is that when you have the, these...
I don't mean to interrupt, but, I mean, I'm not even sure what the intent of this presentation is. I mean, it said there's an ordinance, a draft ordinance written, but it's not attached. Are we preparing to draft orders? If so, there isn't, no reason I'm cutting you off, and I'll let you, I apologize, let you go, but I know you're on a time crunch, too. It sounds like this is something you're very vested in and very knowledgeable of, and if all we're doing is authorizing the creation of a draft ordinance to bring back, I would rather just, rather, because I'm barely paying attention to what you're saying at this point at 6:00 o'clock at night, and you're going very detailed, and I can't kind of follow it all. I'd rather just direct Commissioner Sadiq to work with staff and with Code Enforcement and with West Bradenton to formulate a draft ordinance to bring back to this board for approval, because I think you'll get the support of the Board, and I'd rather just see it in one. That's the only reason I was cutting you off, because you sound like you're rattling off things that should just be on paper for us to look at and approve. If that's the direction, I'd rather just have somebody, not me, I'm the Chair, make a motion to do that, because I trust you will bring, you will bring back a good ordinance because a disproportionate share of these are in your district.
No, I appreciate that. I do think some things should be said for the public, because I think there's a lot of concern around it. Plus, the last motion was to draft an ordinance, and why you all are here is to get our feedback on what to do next, not, I don't want this to be a Commissioner Tao thing, this should be really everyone.
Commissioner Tao.
It really should be everyone. I didn't say it was a priority, it was Commissioner Ballard actually mentioned it for strategy session.
I did.
And this isn't a single district thing. The problem that exists in Northwest Bradenton is distinct from the island, which is distinct from Miaca City and distinct from, what's the other one?
Palmetto.
Palmetto. No, I hear another one, that's the complaint. It's, it's kind of funny, and End of Farms, people like talking about them a lot. Terracya, but...
Way different.
So... So I do want to make sure we have a very easy process, because I've heard some horror stories about having to reinspect every year places you don't need to. So the only caveat I will add to that three-year minimum is at the very least do it yearly for those coastal hazard areas. I just think it's fair. And do automatic renewals for those licenses. I do think we need licenses, because the fundamental sticking point with enforcement is having them. And if we need to take it over from the tax collector, he works with us, I think we should be at the lead, because there's no enforcement without it. The reason why we have DBPR and all these different entities approaching it and you still have problems is no one can take a license away. But I think that's really the last option, the nuclear one. I do want to have a fair, transparent approach where everyone sees, you know, these are, these are the complaints we're getting, no one's just weaponizing the code enforcement to take out a neighbor, he's got, I don't want to see any of that stuff. And I know the software can do it, because I've seen it. So I think three years for the inspections. I also, I want to see if we can accept fire district inspections too. Theirs are very thorough, and I think they're, they go above and beyond, so if we can't accept them in lieu of us doing it ourselves through code enforcement, let's see if we can look into it. It's not something that's been done in any county I've seen, and I've looked at Orange, Marion, Miami Dade, Sarasota, Hillsborough, Pinellas. Yeah, but the fire departments, they kind of split between code enforcement, who does the inspections. But I think it might be an efficient approach. Like if West Manti Fire can do the inspections and submit to us and then we're good, I trust those guys to do it right. And eventually that can be a model for other fire districts. Let's keep the fees low. I think 500, maybe that's a lot, let's start lower, see where we go from there. And then of course, just, just working with property owners. How Holmes Beach has been successful and Anna Maria is transparency. People can pick up the phone, call, and make sure it's transparent for property owners. I don't want to discourage rentals, but I do want to make sure our residents or tourists feel safe when they come here. I mean, God forbid someone has a terrible memory of coming here. So let's just make sure to do that. Other than that, yeah, I think I've sent my piece on the inspections and then the licensing, the need for one, and then automatic renewals, plus the time period, and I'm happy to refine that as well.
Okay, great. And I did want to point out, Gavin reminded me when he came over and talked to me, the tax collector, there's a privacy issue, that's why we can't share. So there's some privacy issues, I did want to point that out also, so. But we understand, I understood everything you said.
I don't have anyone else on the board unless Commissioner Bearden is, but I can't see the Zoom.
My hand is up.
Your hand is, okay, then go ahead.
Here's the deal. We're trying to create more regulation and we're calling ourselves conservative Republicans. All right, like conservative values is limited government, not the expansion of bureaucracy or burdensome regulations on private citizens, guys. We already have regulations put in place. The real issue here is enforcement, not regulation. Many of the concerns can already be handled under the current existing ordinance. Instead of adding more regulation, we should focus on improving enforcement and using existing tools more efficiently, consistent with the principles and good governance that we're supposed to approach this with. But yet, we're talking about adding more government regulation that's already put in place with the cities, with the tax collector, and it just doesn't make sense, guys. I mean, we really need to think about this. I mean, what are we gonna, what are we really about? I mean, and not just that, I mean, we're going to have to create a whole, essentially, specific department to handle all this, which we saw just a while ago in the presentation, that it could cost up to $1.1 million. Are we really going to do that? Do we really want to do that? Because I really don't think that adding more bureaucracy to this is going to help the current situation that we're currently in. I just don't, I don't, I don't see that happening. I think what we need to do is focus on the enforcement piece, not the regulation. And improve our existing ordinances, not more regulation. How do we check this? Because that's the real main issue. The people, you know, they're worried about, you know, the noise ordinances or, you know, their neighbors partying next door. Well, we need to, we need to enforce that. That's the real issue at hand, not putting more regulation on vacation rentals. That's not the conservative Republican way. So I really want you to think this over and the direction that we're going as a county. And also, like, there again, like, if you look at all over the country when it comes to vacation rentals, there are cities and counties that are shutting vacation rentals down. This is, this is the middle-class investment that, that the middle-class can invest in, the little savings that they have. Do we really want to deter people from buying, you know, ST, you know, STRs? We already have regulations on the island, which is with the majority of our vacation rentals today. All we're doing is adding more regulation. If we come and we try to propose this in a way, it just doesn't make sense to me, guys. And, and, you know, I'm not going to be for this. I wasn't for it in the beginning, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sadek, you're back on, or did I not take you?
Thank you, Chair. I'll make the motion, just with a brief comment, I guess. I think, you know, it's one thing to say we're conservative and not do anything about a problem, say there's too much, but I think we're actually doing the business community a disservice by not having a common framework. And I think it's really not fair for businesses to have to look at the tax collector, what fire district they're in, what city they're in, and what, you know, and contact code enforcement. I think it's fair to have one common approach and work, I think as a county entity, be leaders and tying all those entities together. So I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to draft and present this ordinance at our next June meeting, begin that process from there.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sadek, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. I will, I have to open this up to public comment.
I would just want to clarify. We get a lot of calls and complaints about Airbnbs, but nothing in our ordinance regulates anything to do with Airbnbs that we currently have.
All right. I'm still opening this up to public comment. Anyone? Max, you have anything to say? You've been sitting there. I've been waiting for you to come up and talk.
It's almost dinner. All right. Well, for the record, Max Brando, Realtor Association of Sarasota and Manatee. Don't really, I have nothing to respond to, because I don't see any language, so it's a little bit difficult. But I'll just reiterate our position from before. I think Commissioner Bearden said it well. There's a handful of ordinances already on the books, and I, I think the presentation they gave was pretty illuminating. When you look at what other municipalities are spending on programs like this, it's not a, it's, it's not a cheap thing to do. It's a big endeavor to take on. I think that should be taken seriously. And again, what we've seen in other municipalities, and I think you guys should be wary of, so take City of Sarasota, for example. They were going to do something about vacation rentals, they had a great idea, they're going to regulate vacation rentals. They started with one employee. Within a year, it was two employees, and then three employees, and now apparently they're at five employees. City of Pinellas, it cost them a million dollars a year. And I don't know in the staff's discussion with other municipalities, was there like, you know, was there like resounding success? The issues are still going to be persistent, because the people that, the property owners that you typically see that have issues, they're, they're, they don't care about an ordinance. So unless you beef up your code enforcement on, on properties such as that, I mean, I don't see, this is going to hurt the property owners who are doing the, what they should be doing in the first place. And what you're going to see is people go underground, and I don't know if there's a solution for what the county plans to do when properties go underground and just don't register. I think you have to be wary of discouraging people from entering the program at all. So I, you know, Commissioner Sadek's point about reasonable fees, I think that's a good, a point well made. Again, in the City of Sarasota, we saw fees go from about 150, 200 in the first year, and then they basically tripled. The inspection fees tripled over time. So that, that's our point. I would love to be part of, you know, have discussions with staff as they draft it, or I would love to see the draft ordinance. Haven't yet, so, thanks.
Thank you, Max. Any other public comments? Seeing none, and no one's on the phone, I will close. Public comment, there is no one on the board to speak. I have a motion by Commissioner Sadek, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. I will just say, since I haven't really said anything, I agree way more with Commissioner Bearden than I do some of the others. However, this is to direct staff to draft an ordinance. I'd like to see what that ordinance looks like, and if there's pieces of that, that could make sense. But I will just preface the fact that I'm voting in favor of it to write the ordinance, but my heart is more in line with Commissioner Bearden in terms of my thoughts on this. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Nay.
It's not up. It fails as a tie, 3-2-3, with myself, Commissioner Ballard, and Commissioner Sadek in favor, and Commissioner Bearden, Commissioner McCann, and Commissioner Felts in opposition, and Commissioner Ron absent. So the motion to draft the ordinance fails. In all honesty, I was leaning more towards the no anyway, so I guess that fail doesn't really matter, could have just as easily been 2 to 4. So that fails, we will not be writing this ordinance, but I would still encourage, especially Commissioner Ballard and Commissioner Sadek, who are taking the lead on this, to continue having conversations and see if there are things we can do to improve situations that they're seeing.
I don't know that it, I don't know that I'm taking the lead on this, or that I would vote in favor of an ordinance if it came forward.
I would talk to Commissioner Sadek. He seems to really dislike Airbnb people. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. He's not here to defend himself. But it failed, so at this point in time, we're not actively engaged in writing an ordinance, but that doesn't mean we can't continue having conversation. Now, because I promised a certain list of things we're going to do, we're going to bounce all over, as we have been, and item number 58, it's the other Commissioner McCann item for discussion on e-bikes and scooters. Go ahead, sir.
This is going to be a very quick one. I looked at Collier County for what they're doing to regulate it. What we have over in Lakewood Ranch right now is we have a lot of people being menaced over there with e-bikes and with, you know, scooters, and, you know, there's a lot of things going on at all times of the night, and there are, you know, a lot of safety issues with the traffic and the age of the people that are actually operating these vehicles. There was an article about that in The Observer that I included with this, and what I, what I asked for, and I discussed with the county attorney is, you know, there are some notice provisions with this, and there are some things that have to be done. So I asked the county attorney to help me draft a motion to get this started so that we can get things going. Could you?
Would you like me to read the motion, sir?
Yes, please.
Thank you. The motion is, motion to direct and authorize the county administrator to cause staff as soon as reasonably practical to draft a proposed ordinance to amend the county's code of ordinances to establish requirements for the operation of bicycles on sidewalks, crosswalks, and in intersections within the unincorporated portions of Manatee County, which is substantially similar to the recent ordinance adopted by Collier County in April of this year on this subject. Submit same to the county attorney's office for legal review and bring same back to the board for consideration, review, and possible adoption at a properly advertised public hearing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann. I do not have a second. Is there a second on this motion? Second by Commissioner Felts, and I have Commissioner Ballard on the board.
So this is something that we do see a lot in, in my district as well. I don't, I don't necessarily want to see a, an intensive regulation scheme for scooters and e-bikes in the county. However, that being said, I was at a meeting earlier this week, it was an evening meeting that included representatives from the city, the school district, state attorney, and sheriff, and there were concerns that were raised regarding our youth, who were out menacingly at various times of night committing crimes. And so I think that there's something that I would like to bring forward, which may help to address some of those issues, that I intend to bring forward at a later meeting, which is a youth curfew. They do it in Miami Dade County, they do it in various other areas. We can talk about it further, but it is an, a midnight to 6:00 a.m. restriction on kids just loitering about, for kids who are doing things like going to sports games or going to county events, or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There are a million carve-outs, but there are a lot of people in, in my district particularly who are very concerned about kids who are out and about committing crimes, burglaries, that kind of thing. So possibly that could help to address some of the issue. For a vote today, just putting you on notice that it is, it has been raised by many.
Duly noticed. I remember the last time someone brought up curfews on this, that went well.
Again, I understand exactly what you're saying there, but this is happening during the daytime, during the weekends, you know, and they're very flippant, very vulgar in what they're doing over there. And, you know, they ride away on these e-bikes, so, and they tell people, you know, they're trespassing constantly. The sheriff has been called many times on this, but again, the sheriff's response time to this is slower than we want it to be, and, you know, it will increase once we put the sheriff substation over there. But the thing is that, you know, the, the people are really up in arms over the fact that they're just coming in and, you know, they're swearing at these people. They're telling these old people, you know, where they can go, and they're saying, you can't control us. So this is the reason for this motion.
Yeah, okay, I was on the board. There were a number of things on the original ordinance proposal I wasn't a fan of, but I did, upon hearing the change to going off the Collier one, that was a, a good, sensible, it just makes sense. I mean, most of those, you'd kind of almost be surprised you have to make an ordinance about them. They should just be rules anyway. So I am in favor of, of this motion. I will be voting in favor of it. Going forward. If you add a rider for a curfew, you're going to have a different vote for me.
Not, not for today.
Okay.
I will, I do intend to bring it up at a later time. I'm, I'm not even, I don't...
I'm looking forward to having that conversation with you. But for today, I do, I do support this, this motion as it's presented. I have no one else on the board. I'll open this up to public comment. See no one? I have no one on the phone. I will close public comment. Commissioner Bearden does not have his hand up. I have a motion by Commissioner McCann, seconded by Commissioner Felts. You can cast your votes now. Note that Towell's not here, so don't wait for his vote. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's an aye. We'll go with yes. I'm making a decision. The county attorney would like you to clarify your vote.
Y E A.
Is that a yes, sir, or a no, sir?
That's a yes.
Thank you.
Yes, all right.
Y E S.
It's approved 5 to 0 with Commissioners Sadek and Ron absent. All right, we got four more. Let's see how fast we can go on these things. They should be straightforward. They should be straightforward. Item number 52, well, let's go back to order again. This is the motion for the Doge thing that we asked to come back. Remember, it is 6:23.
We're so excited to talk about Doge, and we'll be Doge-y to do this. So, we've got a letter that you've directed us to write. Brent Anderson, our government relations manager, is going to tell you really quickly on 10 seconds what's the highlight here.
Okay, you don't have to be that crazy. We can still conduct, we can still conduct business. It was a very, first off, it was a very nice letter. I didn't even realize how good we were.
I know.
We've been doing a lot, we've been doing a lot of projects at the county to already start these efforts, and so, to highlight a couple, the milord rate cuts, the AAA bond rating, and the streamlining of our departments will go a long way in showing the governor's office we're already making strides in this effort.
It was a better letter than Hillsborough's. We're showing them up.
That's right.
That was the goal, Chair. And then, just, I just wanted to highlight the end of it as well, establishing the committee to work with county administration and the governor's office to find efficiencies.
What is the timing for the creation of that committee so we can advertise it, so we can get applicants in to start that process?
It's not stipulated in here, so we can-
Well, I'm kind of, I mean, this is kind of being overseen by your department, correct, Stephanie? So, what is the anticipation? We do need to advertise these seats so we can get applicants in, and we can vote on it. Unless we're going to get this thing up and running quickly, we're not going to have a dumb before recess, so that will be a vote post-recess, which I guess is fine. It gives people the summer to put their applications in, and we can do it the first meeting back after recess. Would've been nice to do it before, but people were busy over the summer anyway, so probably would've been very productive.
First meeting after recess, we'll add that language.
Not the language, that's what we would want to have, the applications in during recess so we can vote right away. We want to get this ball rolling here. We don't want to take this down the road.
Okay. So, you're okay with the letter, and then us working with that timeline?
I'm okay with the letter. I think the letter is spectacular.
Great.
Great to hear. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Yes, so, the motion was slightly amended. If I can ask County Administrator to read the motion. It's based on the county attorney's advice. We broke it into three different parts.
Adoption of Resolution R-25-072. Approve the letter in the form presented to the governor on behalf of the board, and authorize the chair to sign it, and direct the county administrator to cause transmittal of the letter to the governor and county attorney comments. Okay. It's on my list. Take the county comments out. County Attorney.
Can I, can I give the correct motion?
Please. Right here for me.
I think the motions need to be, has he read the first part was correct? Approve the letter in the form presented to the governor on behalf of the board, and authorize the chair to sign it. Direct the county administrator to cause transmittal of the letter to the governor. Approve Resolution Number 25-072. Now, to the extent that you want to create the committee, there's a separate motion. And that motion would be, I move to approve the creation of the Manatee County Government Efficiency Liaison Committee as described in Resolution 25-072, and which shall additionally have the following structure, authority, and responsibilities. And these are taken from the letter and from the example for Hillsborough. It be comprised of five members selected by a majority vote of the board, with each prospective member being a resident of and a registered voter in Manatee County, and authorized to meet monthly for up to one year after the initiation of the EOG Doge Team Engagement with Manatee County, which authorization may only be extended by a majority vote of the board, and providing written updates monthly to the board and a final report to the board at the conclusion of its work. That's what was encompassed by the Hillsborough motion, so that would be the appropriate language if that's what the board wants to do here today.
I can't make any motions. I'm Chair, and I never gave it up, so.
And I can give this language all to the clerk for her benefit. You need it. So moved.
What she said.
That's all you need.
What she said.
So, would that be two separate motions? One to do the letter and the resolution, and then a second motion to authorize Stephanie and her team to create the board based upon the list of options and so forth, so we can advertise it?
I think you can, sorry, repeat that?
Well, was that two motions or one motion?
It's really four. But you can do them all in one.
I'm not the attorney.
You can, it's one motion, but you can do four parts to it.
Okay, well, I'd like to do it in one.
Okay, one motion approving those four items. The letter, directing the county administrator, as I stated, approving the resolution, and then approving the creation of the committee, as stated on the record.
And the creation of that committee would authorize Stephanie and her team to advertise those positions right now, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner McCann. No one's on the board. Yes, thanks. Open this up to public comments. No one. Close public comment. No one's on the phone. And just to let you know, Commissioner Sadiq is on Zoom, so I'm going to call out for his vote. All right, you can cast your votes now. Commissioner Sadiq, Commissioner Bearden, how do you two vote? Commissioner Bearden, what's that?
Bearden, yes.
Commissioner Sadiq, what did you say?
Yes.
Okay, they're both yeses. And that is approved 6-2-0 with Commissioner Ron absent. Go advertise those positions. How, Michelle, how long is your thing?
My presentation is less than a minute, but I do have a motion for you guys to-
Oh, you have a motion? Okay, then you're next then. Okay, okay. I thought it was just a quick little updatey kind of thing.
Well, I have that too, but I'm going to start with that. So, just wanted to let you know where we are is we have, we're in the process of finishing the unmet needs assessments that goes into the required part of the action plan. We are going to be bringing the draft action plan to the board May 20th for your approval, and we'll be doing the briefing on those right the week before that. We then will publish the draft action plan for public comment, May 21st through June 20th, and then we will submit the finalized to HUD by the end of June 30th. So, we're rounding the corner on the first part, where we're going to be able to get it to them and hopefully get a quick review back from them.
And what was our deadline to present them with the finalist?
30th.
We have till June 30th to-
Not for the list. So, what we have to do with the action plan is just the categories, and there are only five different categories, so determining how much we want to put in infrastructure, how much in housing, how much in economic revitalization, how much in mitigation, which really can go all the others.
We still have to more or less have the list, at least.
It is.
Sort of figure it out, otherwise you're just going to arbitrarily put percentages and tie us in a bind while we're just then backtracking through the list.
And that's why we actually asked for all of those lists, so that we can make a really informed decision, and instead of just kind of putting our finger in the wind and going with that.
Gotcha.
So, the motion that we have is a motion to approve Manatee County allocating community development block grant disaster relief funds specific for projects to each municipality in proportion to their percentage of the population of the county as a whole, as presented herein. And if you could scroll up for a second, you can see the, or you can see the percentages we're down here. Okay, so, unincorporated Manatee County, 82.28 percent. Bradenton, 12.94 percent. Palmetto, 3.08 percent. Holmes Beach, .69 percent. Longboat Key, .58 percent. Anna Maria Island, .23 percent, and Bradenton Beach, .21 percent. We can change that if you don't think that is enough for us to do in that aspect, but that was from the previous instruction, and then my bringing that to everybody a couple weeks ago.
Sure. Quick question, because I fully support this. This is what I asked for.
Yeah.
It made life a lot easier just to tell people to figure out their own projects based on mine. There's an administrative component to this. Is the intention still to flow everything through the county? And are these percentages based on the whole 253 million, or do we exclude the administrative portion first and then run the percentages?
We excluded the administration piece first. They all, HUD especially, suggests that the county themselves do administer the grant funds to make sure that there's uniformity across everybody, and that compliance piece, as well as just to check some balance.
Perfect. Sounds good to me. I have no one on the board.
I don't see the city of Lakewood Ranch.
It's not a real city.
They're part of unincorporated Manatee County.
It's not even a real place, some would say.
Tal's just not going to live that down. Okay, there's no one on the board. Open this up for public comment. No one on the phone. Close public comment. Tal, that'll drop back off Zoom, so he's no longer there. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Yay.
Thank you. That is approved 5-2-0 with Commissioners Sadiq and Ron absent. And I'm sorry, in case I didn't say it, that was moved by Commissioner Ballard and seconded by Commissioner McCann.
Can you repeat the first and the second for the benefit of the clerk, please?
It was, the first was Commissioner Ballard, second was Commissioner McCann. And approved 5-0 with Commissioners Sadiq and Ron absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, two more. I'm just going to get through this thing. Item number 54, execution of contract for sale/purchase from Valerie, Massey, and Robert Mayhew for property located on Erie Road.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, Tim Cristello, Senior Real Property Specialist, Property Acquisition Division. I'm seeking your approval today to purchase land located at 10205 Erie Road for $7.3 million. This is a full acquisition of two parcels consisting of two-
Billion?
7.3 billion dollars?
No, 7.3 million.
Okay, I thought I heard you say billion.
No, not billion, no, $7.3 million. It's consistent, it's a full acquisition of two parcels consisting of 62.73 acres. The land is needed for Erie Road right-of-way improvements, Erie Road Wetland Mitigation Bank that we're going to create, and is going to be managed by Natural Resources Department, and for Sawgrass right-of-way needs for a roundabout. The appraised value for the land improvements is $8 million and $70,000. This property is the homestead of the owners, and they are willing sellers. The owners want to sell the property to Manatee County for less than appraised value to preserve the land. The Wetland Mitigation Bank, as I said, will be maintained by Natural Resources. For further questions, I do have Scott May here, as well as Charlie Hunsaker.
Anyone have any questions? I have no one on the board. We don't have any questions. I mean, once you clarified it was not billion, then I think we all got a little more comfortable.
My apologies. It's been a long day.
All right, I will open this up to public comments. Anyone on the phone? Wait, I think I hand went up, I can't see it.
It says 4441?
Oh, okay. On the little box. 441, did you put your hand up for this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I did. Just a short public comment on this particular item to the-
I'm going to need, I'm going to need name for the clerk. I need, I need your name for the clerk.
I'm sorry, Anthony Shulow, Manatee County.
All right. Now, you can repeat whatever you said while I was talking over you to try to, because I needed you to state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Anthony Shulow, Manatee County. I just wanted to just express my gratitude to the residents who sold their property and to Manatee County for offering to buy that property to preserve wetlands in this area, so thank you to those residents, and to you guys for putting that together.
All right, thank you. I see nobody else. I will close public comment. No one's on the board. I have a motion by Commissioner Felts. I will second that one. Seconded by me. You can cast your votes now. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Yes.
That is approved 5-2-0 with Commissioners Sadiq and Ron absent. Moving on to the final item of the day, which is supposed to go along with a different item, but it didn't. Adoption of Resolution R-25-035, declaring certain county real property as not surplus, and rescinding Resolution R-22-176. This is the motion to unsurplus the Musgrave property on Lena Road for future use for the county. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator. The Chair is right, essentially adoption of Resolution R-25-035, declares the property on 1707 Lena Road as a not surplus, and rescinds the resolution from 2022, in particular, R-22-176 in its entirety.
Does anyone have any questions on this? I think we've all made our point on this particular item, that we intend to use this property and not sell it off for parts. So, this is, I think, hopefully comforting to, I mean, we claimed we were going to use it and not sell it, but by unsurplusing it, we're putting it an added burden and wall against anyone trying to change that policy of this board, so I'm glad to see this come up. We have a motion by Commissioner Ballard and seconded by Commissioner Felts. No one's on the board. I'll open this up to public comment. Seeing no public comment. I see nobody on the phone. I will close public comment. You can cast your votes now. Commissioner Bearden, how do you vote?
Yes.
That is approved 5-2-0 with Commissioners Sadiq and Ron absent. Thank you very much. That is the end of our agenda. County Attorney, do you have any comments?
Very, very briefly.
Oh, you do? Usually I just say that.
I know, I know. I would just take, like to take a brief moment to note that this month marks one year since I began serving as your county attorney, as the head of your county attorney's office, and I want to sincerely thank the board and the county administrator, all of the team members in our, in my office, and all of the county staff for their trust, support, and collaboration over this past year. It's been an honor to work for you and serve you, and I wanted to let you know that I expect to be presenting our annual report to the board at the next board meeting.
It's going to be like an old-school annual report, or?
My intention is to place it on consent.
So, not a one-hour presentation?
I, unless the board, unless any member of the board wants to pull it, I plan to simply put it on consent and brief you individually regarding any questions you have.
I don't know if everyone was here long enough to have watched some of those. County Administrator, do you have anything? All right, Commissioner Ballard.
Yes, I do have something brief. Commissioner Cruz, I just want to allay your fears a little bit about the potential for a youth curfew.
Oh, I'm not scared.
No, no, no. No, no, no. There is, so I got some information from our state attorney. There is a statute already in place which addresses a whole lot of these issues. It's 877.22, minors prohibited in public places and establishments during certain hours sets a penalty and procedure.
Is that our statute, or did that come from like Russia? What is that?
That is, that is a, that is a, that is in Florida statute.
Really?
Yep. So, if I bring anything forward, it would just be, it would be substantially similar to what is already in Florida statute, just tweaking a couple of little things, and maybe even, yeah.
Call my state representative.
I think you might.
Yeah. Thank you for the update. Real-time updates right here from the dais. Commissioner McCann. Commissioner Felts. Commissioner Bearden.
I got no.
All right. And I just want to thank everyone. I know this was a, well, not really that long of a day, but we started very late, so it feels a little bit longer than it actually is. We have a full week with a work session tomorrow. We've got a joint meeting with Longboat Key, Township of Longboat Key, tomorrow afternoon. We have got a land use meeting on Thursday. There's a lot going on in Manatee County here in these chambers this week. Just real quick, half the board, four commissioners, as well as some staff, went up to DC last week, had some great meetings, met with a number of our representatives from around the state of Florida. We also met with both the Florida senators, one senator and then staff from another, and did our best to really allay some of our concerns relative to FEMA and storm mitigation and how things went. We want to get ahead of this for next year. We also talked a lot about block grants. What I thought was just an amazing meeting with HUD at the tail end of it, just the information presented that we can utilize some of these funds for good purposes, and really getting a face-to-face with them was great. It was a good trip. All of the Commissioners worked- great. It was a good trip. All of the Commissioners worked extremely well together, splitting up meetings when need be to make sure we were expressing our needs relative to appropriations and working with representatives. So I want to thank all the staff for coming. I want to thank Stephanie and her team for making sure that was set up for a successful trip. And onward, and let's hopefully get some positive results from that trip. So if there's nothing further, as I mentioned earlier, real quick, before I forget, I'll mention again Thursday. But I do have town halls every month, and next month on Monday is my next town hall, and that is at the Lakewood Ranch Library at 6:00 PM. All right. And with that, if there's nothing further, I will adjourn.